Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Clemens.
President.
Counselor Landjevan.
President.
Counselor Makuchi.
Delayed.
Counselor McDonald.
Present.
Counselor Moriarty.
Present.
Counselor Nicola.
Present.
Counselor Peliquin.
Present.
Counselor Regis.
Present.
Counselor Vandal.
Present.
Eight here, one delayed.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, Consider and Accept Town Council Meeting Minutes of Monday, November 19th, 2012. Okay, any discussion, any corrections?
Madam Chair.
One abstention? Right, he's abstaining. You have something? No? Okay, can we have a roll call, please? Oh, actually, we're gonna do a round, just a show of hands for this, it's not necessary. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. Agenda item number four, Subcommittee Reports, A, General Government, that is Counselor Regis?
No report, no meeting scheduled, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. B, DPW, Counselor Vandal?
No report, we have a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. This Wednesday or next, a week from?
Next Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. C, Education and Human Services, that is Counselor Makuchi, she's not here, and I don't believe there's anything. No. D, Planning and Development, Counselor Clemens?
Thank you, Madam Chair, no minutes and no meetings scheduled at this time.
Thank you. E, Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Landjevan?
Thank you, Madam Chair, no report and no meeting scheduled. There is a report, but I read that at the last meeting.
Okay, so we're all set.
It's just a duplicate that you see in your packet.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, moving on to Chairwoman's announcements, I just have a few. I'm gonna read this, it's, "Due to the departure of the school department, this has given the administration the opportunity to reallocate office space in the town hall. As many of you already know, the manager has moved the office, the town manager's office, to the second floor in the vacated school offices, which are in the back of this hall. In an effort to provide additional meeting room space in the town hall, the following meeting room allocations will be made. Upper level, this floor, will include the new George Parent Community Room, which is adjacent to the town manager's office, over there in that corner. This room will be primarily reserved for town councils, subcommittees, and school committee meetings. A committee meeting room will also be designed to provide meeting space for seven to 12 people. The final location of this room is to be determined. On the main level, which is our first floor, the assessors' office will relocate to the old town manager's office, and the assessors' office across from the retirement board office will become the veterans' meeting room, designed to hold large participant meetings. The Rice Conference Room will be modified and will have one head table at one end with additional chairs for the audience, and will be suitable for public hearings or training sessions. On the lower level, our basement, the McCann Room will remain as is, and the room known as Meeting Room Number Two will now be known as the Larry Hyman Room. All rooms continue to be reserved via the town clerk's office." This is just to give you a sense of some of the changes that are going on here in the town hall, so I wanted to read that to you. Also, we mentioned this at the last council meeting, as of December 1st, we are now in alternate side parking and snow emergency parking. And this will be, is posted, I believe, on the access channel, the, during the period beginning on December 1st and ending on April 1st of each year, between the hours of 7:00 PM and seven, says 7:00 PM and 7:00 PM, parking shall be allowed only on the odd-numbered side of any townway on odd-numbered days, and on even-numbered side of any townway on even-numbered days. No vehicle shall be parked or left unattended except in accordance with this regulation. For any exceptions, please check the access channel, and it should give you any alternate routes that you might need. Lastly, there's been an awful lot of rumor and innuendo surrounding the school side, and some of which is truth and some of it's fiction, from what I gather. Either way, I know that the school committee right now has its hands full in trying to sort out an awful lot of the issues, starting from the top and working down. And as the Chair of the Town Council, I would simply like to say to the school committee that you do have my support, and I would imagine the support of all the members of the Town Council. We are here to work with you, and if there's anything that we can do to help or show more support, please feel free to get in touch. Other than that, I'd like to move it on to the town manager's announcements, I believe he has a few, if you would, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a few this evening. The first is that we did receive, the town, through the Board of Health, submitted for a DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, grant, and we were received a Sustainable Material Recovery Program municipal grant, in the amount of $1,250 towards recycling efforts in the community. So I just wish to acknowledge the good work of the Board of Health in accomplishing that. The next three items I have are all follow-up items to questions that have come up, either at the last meeting or the meeting before. And I put this in the package, I realize that because it came up publicly, I just wanna comment a little bit on them publicly, but then to also really encourage the council, if there's any direction or follow-up that they'd like to see, more than happy to have these go on to subcommittee and continue the dialogue in regards to it. So the first one is the police letter that we sent to the state auditor. What I've done is I've done some due diligence, the police chief is, has signed the town up for an accreditation program that is done through, the Commonwealth of Mass has a police accreditation agency that does this work. It is about, well, the fee is $1,150, they come in and they review, really, your department for best practices, and then put together a plan or make suggestions in terms of how the department needs to improve itself. I think that this is a worthy venture to do this at this stage, also out of that $1,150, because it's a state agency and we're a municipality, it's a discounted rate, but we also do receive almost half of that back in a insurance reimbursement. So, and I did include materials in the package that shows that it is a fairly comprehensive effort that's done. In terms of the letter that we sent to auditor bump, it had several items in that, and I broke the items out into basically two different pieces. One, I met with a police management firm to look at completing items one, two, four, and five on the counselor's, on the council's petition. This was kind of more the management elements that they wanted to have looked at, or the council wanted to have looked at. The price range for this work, to conduct the management survey, would be $15,000 for limited scope and $30,000 for fuller scope. On the other items that were contained in that, it was more of a, an accounting or auditing function, and on those it was items one, three, six, and seven. And we did, I did meet, actually, I think I had the town accountant with me, with our previous audit firm, Melanson &amp; Heath, they do have someone on board that does specifically police forensic audits, and we had him come in, talk about the letter, talk about what we would like to accomplish, and he gave us a price range of between $12,000 and $15,000 to do a review of the financial elements of the letter. He did encourage us that we do have some grants, maybe as small as $100, and it seems kinda silly to engage in a review of such small amounts, so he did, he did recommend to us that we look at grants in excess of $5,000. So, the recommendation that I have as manager is that we pursue the police accreditation program and see what findings come out of that. If the council does desire, I would be prepared to do a more comprehensive review simultaneously, but that would require only that I put together an appropriation request for, if you total up those numbers that I gave you, about $45,000. Because some of the thresholds are above the $25,000, I would have to do a scope of services, most likely for both these, I would do a scope of services. So that may be one that, at the PPP meeting, if there's, if there's, wants to be a discussion, we can have a more detailed discussion. But I did wanna let the council know that I have actively looked into getting some price quotes and kinda thinking through what we would need to do under the auspices, that, you know, if we have a good department, we can hopefully always make it better. The next one that I have, there was some issue in regards to the purchase of backhoes that the DPW had requested. I did go through the material and did include in the, in the packages, the memos from the DPW director. Long story short, based upon what the DPW director specifically submitted, he actually requested three pieces of equipment be traded in, and that two pieces be acquired, and he did complete what he had indicated in the paperwork, that he said he would complete. Part of that was that one of the machines that was gonna be replaced, the backhoe portion of it has been made inoperable, so people won't try to use it, but the front-end loader portion is still safe, so they are using that as strictly as a reserve piece located at our wastewater treatment facility. And again, this can have more discussion, but I just wanted to kinda report back the findings of going through the record to see what had officially transpired, because I know on that one I was specifically asked, and I think I have a fairly good memory, but I just could not recall the specific details. And then lastly, this also, I'd done a lot of research last week, was on the topic of the town of Charlton and entering into agreement with Casella and the town of Charlton, and this was actually, it goes back a ways, that the town of Southbridge and the town of Charlton actually had special legislation that was put forth and approved, Chapter 210 of the Acts of 1993, which changed the boundary line between the town of Charlton and Southbridge to include the elements of the landfill. There was also in that special legislation that there was supposed to be a, call it a meeting of the minds or an understanding, a memo of understanding between the town of Southbridge and the town of Charlton regarding Charlton's use of the landfill. That, that basically never, never came to fruition. There were several efforts that were made to accomplish that over that time period from, initially from 1993, and then there was another effort made in 2007. The council was advised in April of 2007 at a meeting, that by Attorney John Giorgio, who represented the town, that this, that in order to comply with the elements of the special legislation, he had suggested that that be incorporated in the landfill extension agreement, and that was incorporated under Exhibit J. And the Exhibit J, which was executed by the council, basically asked that SRD, which is Casella, the operator, has agreed to negotiate with the town of Charlton a rate which shall be no greater than, than the prevailing commercially reasonable rates for the town of Charlton to dispose of MSW in the landfill facility. So it does appear, from a legal standpoint and from a policy standpoint, that the council wanted to basically have this be dealt with by Casella. Certainly, if there's additional discussion or desires of the council, I think also that may facilitate some additional discussion. But I at least wanted to provide feedback for the legislative history on a couple of those, and obviously, it's the council's wishes, whichever direction you wish to go. On the, on the Casella one, though, specifically, the town will be receiving its royalty payment, so I know it was per, it was indicated in the newspaper that it was free for residents at Charlton. It is free 'cause Casella's picking up the expense, but it's certainly not free because the town is getting the royalty payments for those, for those tons. And the other part of that is the tonnage would go to the facility that is under, or will be under construction, to allow for people to drop off material, and that will be open to Southbridge residents, and that is not just Charlton residents, that is open to Southbridge residents as well. And that work should commence in the spring, with probably late spring, the construction to be completed. And that concludes my report this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Okay, moving on to agenda item number seven, we have two presentations, first being Master Plan Review by Sandy Ackley.
Can everybody hear me okay? Well, good evening, and thank you very much for allowing me the pleasure of updating you just a little bit on our townwide master plan project that we started back in May. We've been working with our consultants, Community Preservation Associates, also known as CPA, and the steering committee and subcommittees. Also, we have a group of friends of the master plan that are volunteering their activities, so it's kind of nice, we have a very large group. I think most everybody knows by now that planning, master planning is done in three phases. The first one is information gathering, where we find out who we are, how we got there, all kinds of factual information, demographic information. Community Preservation Associates took actually two to three months interviewing and gathering a lot of data, and they have written a tome about this big, and summaries of which you actually have before you. Those are just summaries, there's a lot of information out there. The second phase is where we are now, and that is the gathering of public input. It's required by law, and it's a good idea, anyway. We've been having several public hearings, sorry, not public hearings, but public meetings. We had one with the high school seniors, we've had one at the senior center, we've had one at Eagles, we've had a few others, we, this week, we're going to be at Big Bunny, and we're gonna be on Main Street and Community Connections. There are other ways, we're, we're searching for everybody's input. There are other ways to give your input also, you can go on the master planning website, which is www.southridgemasterplan.org. You can go, we have a Facebook page, that's very popular. Also, this week, comment boards are going out, one of them is actually in the lobby here, one of them is at the library, one at the YMCA, one will be at the hospital, the three local banks, and the arts center. And those are places where you just fill out a sticky, we're looking for you to tell us your things that you really like about the town, and things that you'd like to see change, that you don't like so much. And finally, on December 12th, right here in this room, at 6:30 PM, we will be having a very large public forum in which we hope, to which we hope you will all attend, as well as, as many people from the public as is possible. All of the data that we've been collecting will be presented then, and will actually be asking for more. It's such an important meeting that we are serving pizza. We also have childcare, and you'll be seeing some flyers and some more information about that, but it's December 12th at 6:30 PM. From there, we will actually have three or more, but probably just three, roundtable discussions with experts regarding issues that have sort of, that have come to the forefront during the master planning process. Those will also be used to, and be incorporated into the plan. The final stage is compiling the data, passing it along to the subcommittees and steering committee, and they will test the feasibility of it, formulate a, an implementation plan, and a funding plan. And so basically, that's where we are, we're still in the middle of the, of the public opinion phase, and we certainly hope that as many people will come next week, 12, 12, 12, at 6:30 PM. We hope you will all come to have your say and to find out what everybody is talking about. And I would just like to close by saying, the discussions at these forums have been quite unbelievable. Thoughtful, thoughtful discussion, gut-wrenching stuff, it's just really amazing, and I think, having heard the high school seniors, I think if our future is in their hands, we're gonna be okay, they have been very impressive. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackley. This time, I'd all, I'd like to bring the Board of Assessors up to discuss the tax classification and the tax rate. Mr. Kenoyer?
Thank, thank you very, very much. It'll take me a moment to get my computer and the projector going, we'll have some PowerPoint slides, but, so please bear with me for about a moment, for a minute. Thank you very, very much. Good evening, Chairman Nicola, members of the Town Council, citizens of Southbridge. I'm, I'm Will Kenoyer, I'm chairman of the Board of Assessors and the principal assessor. Kara? Just the audience, I've already distributed those, sorry. She was being helpful to me, and I didn't give her all the details, so, bad me, my bad. Tonight, we'll be discussing the tax rate and tax classification factor for fiscal year 2013. On behalf of the other members of the Board of Assessors, Kara Donovan, Fran Biscay, and myself, we would like to present the following information. Before we begin, actually, I just wanna compliment Kara Donovan and Fran Biscay. There are a lot of volunteers and a lot of people who do a lot of things for the town of Southbridge, there are two of them who've been doing it for a very long time. Fran has been a volunteer, part-time member of the Board of Assessors since, assessors since 1991, good friend of mine, and I, I'm glad he's been here with me. Kara Donovan, I believe, started in the assessors' office in the early 90s, she was principal assessor for a number of years, she left for personal reasons and returned to, to become an elected member of the Board in 2005 or 2006. So they're great volunteers who've been doing a yeoman's work for a long time, and the town is very lucky to have them with all their experience. The council, you've already received detailed information in, in your packet, but this presentation will summarize it for you and for all the residents. I know a lot of this is kinda tedious, part of it, I just went over in the classification hearing, but it really puts a good summary for all of the citizens of where the money comes from, where it goes, how each person gets allocated their share, how we compare to other towns, and many, many other details, so please bear with me. I know you've, Fran and Kara have seen this many, many times, and they still put up with me, so, anyway. The purpose of classification and the options, Mass General Law allows a shift in the tax burden between classes of property. This does not change the total tax levy for a town, it simply determines the share to be borne by each class of property. The properties are residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. What classification does not do? Classification doesn't determine the tax rate for the town, we'll go over in detail where that comes from, but it's really basic mathematics. Classification does not determine how much money can be raised. Proposition Two and a Half and Mass General Law has determined how much money can be raised. Classification does not determine how much money will be raised. The votes, the voted upon appropriations during the course of the year, and all of the revenue sources that come other than tax, the tax levy, that's what determines it. All of the appropriations are voted upon amounts at budget time and all during the course of the year. Our key topics of, we'll be discussing tonight are our new growth, our property values, and the total town value. As many of you know, this was a revaluation year, and we just received final certification last week on all of our values. The tax levy and the tax rate, levy limit, what that means, excess levy capacity, the classification factor, which I've already alluded to, examples of a tax shift, if we were to decide to shift part of the levy from the residential class, and tax-wise, how do we compare to other towns? New growth, what is it? Well, it's new buildings, additions, renovations, subdivisions, condo conversions, businesses, factory, business equipment. There's not a lot of that going on, but the business equipment is still growing. The bulk of our new growth this year has come from our personal property, some new houses, a lot of additions and repairs to properties. How does it affect the property taxes? Well, it brings in additional tax dollars attributable to the new construction, and it lessens the effect to current taxpayers. The people who do the building become responsible for that additional part of the levy, in a summary way. How does it affect the levy limit? It increases the amount of property tax that can be raised under the provisions of prop, excuse me, under Proposition Two and a Half. New growth this year, as you can see, there was $11,505,000 in total new growth, which will bring in an additional $205,137 in property tax, without affecting the existing taxpayers. Last year's new growth was $207,000, so it's reasonably consistent. And as you can see, the bulk of it was personal property. Only 32% is coming from the residential class, while 79.9% of this year's new growth is from the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. As I said, the bulk of it is personal property, and... Okay, as you can see in this slide, the total town value this year is $907,741,000. This is a slight decrease of $2,700,000 from last year, it's a small amount statistically. This is the, the important thing here, though. Last year, the residential class bore 77% of the total taxes, and this year, that's reduced again. This is a continuation of a trend that began in 2007, and the primary reason is that the entire residential class decreased only slightly in value, while the CIP classes increased in value 3.8%. This shifts the tax burden to those properties, which in this case are the CIP properties. This is a graphic breakdown of it, but it's basically the same numbers, as you can see, the residential class bears the bulk of the tax burden. This slide here is, is pretty good to look at. What this tells you is in 2007, the residential class bore 83.4% of the tax burden, and as you can see, that percentage has been going down to the 77.1% that it is today, that the residential class bears. And the commercial, industrial, and personal property tax, property classes have gone from 16.6% to 22.9, so they're paying a bigger share of our town's taxes. Prior to the beginning of this chart, the opposite was happening, from around 2000, the residential class kept picking up a bigger and bigger percentage of the tax burden, and that's because their properties were appreciating in value, along with the general real estate boom in our, in our whole country, and these people were picking up a bigger portion of the tax burden. That's why, even though our property taxes, the, the tax increase every year was, you know, a reason, I don't wanna say reasonable, was a set amount, but each class picked up different shares. Now, fortunately, the residential class is getting a little bit of a, a relief from that, and it's been happening for the last several years, which is good news. Recertification and interim year adjustments. Revaluation, recertification, interim year adjustments. What this means is Massachusetts Constitution requires that all taxes, all direct taxes on property be proportionally assessed. The 1961 Betagold decision by the Mass Supreme Court further stated that proportionally could only be achieved if all property is a that proportionally could only be achieved if all property is assessed at its full and fair cash value. Legislative and further SJC action, including the Sudbury decision, has further directed the Commissioner of Revenue with the power and the duty to require that communities meet that standard. What all that says is the Commissioner of Revenue has powers that are severe and in directing towns to be-- go to full and fair cash value. Recertification, I alluded to this a little bit in the public hearing. Every year, the requirements get more and more strict, and they're more and more difficult to reach. We just reached it last week. There are communities that don't reach it, and don't reach it, and have their tax bills delayed until middle of the next year, until they finally meet the Commissioner of Revenue's requirements. We reached it last week, which is a huge milestone. I was very, very thrilled that we reached it last week. But what that really means is all the properties are fully and fairly assessed. Full and fair cash value by the standard is January 1, 2012, which is a year ago from today. The comparable arms-length sales that we have to use are the year prior to that. That's why the values tend to lag by a year. You'll notice I have an "S" at the end of "prior years." In a market where there are a lot of unusual non-arms-length sales happening, like right now, foreclosure sales was alluded, short sales, all of those kind of things, you can't use those sales. They don't meet the definition of a valid sale. So in our case, in a lot of classes, because we didn't have enough sales to meet the statistical requirements of the Commissioner of Revenue, we had to go back two years. So we're using 2010 and 2011 sales to value as of January 1, 2012. So there's a lag. There's always a lag. That's why people used to say assessed values have to be lower than the sale prices. Not necessarily, but there's a lag as they go up, and there's a lag as they come down. But our properties meet full and fair cash value. Why is this important to people? Your property taxes are all based on your proportional share of the town ownership. So in other words, if there were 10 houses in a town valued at $100,000 apiece, town's worth $1 million, everybody pays 10% of the tax levy. And your house is at full and fair cash value, you own 1/10th of the town. In effect, everybody who owns property in Southbridge owns a percentage of the town, and their proportional share is based on their value as compared to the total town. And these proportions change year to year. That's why sometimes people-- overall, the taxes will go up or down or stay the same, but individual taxes will vary based on that. The valuation changes for this year. Based on the sales, assessed values were adjusted as follows. Single families overall went down about 1.6% in value. Condominiums went up 1.1%. Two and three families, they barely changed, so zero. Multifamily properties overall went up in value 3.9%. Land prices overall, residential land, went down 2.5%. So in the aggregate, the total residential class, all of the above, went down by about 6/10ths of a percent. The total commercial valuation went up 3.2%. The total industrial went up 9.6%. This is due to a lot of factors. Part of it is, in the revaluation, some properties that were classified as commercial became residential based on their use and so forth. So it's a little-- not misleading, but it's not as clear-cut as it would indicate. Further, all of the commercial and industrial properties are valued, in addition to the cost and the sales approach, but there aren't a lot of sales on them, they're also based on capitalized income. In other words, what could the net income that that property would rent for, and you capitalize that income, what would that income stream be worth? And as interest rates have remained low, that's put, oddly enough, that type of property, the income stream is more desirable, particularly in good apartments. You know, not-- okay. Okay, your tax levy and your tax rate. The tax levy is determined by all the appropriations and expenditures and state and county charges. It's paid for by state aid, cherry sheet and reimbursements, local receipts, which are many things, but excise tax fees, building permits, ambulance fees, et cetera, enterprise funds, the water and sewer revenues that we get for our water and sewer rates, free cash, what stabilization transfers, as they're applied to the budget. The remainder is the tax levy. This is the town of Southbridge. The total amount of money to be raised, and this is from the recap sheet, which is, I know you all know it pretty well, but people at home may not be aware of these terms. The recapitalization sheet is a form that kind of consolidates a lot of the accounting and municipal finances at the end of the year. And it's how the state will review all of this and, you know, hopefully approve our tax rate and all of these things. But the total amount to be raised for Southbridge this year is $56,200,000. From that, you subtract the state aid receipts, $20,813,000; the local receipts of $5,575,000; enterprise revenues of $8,505,000; free cash, transfers, stabilization, and overlay, $4,205,000. Some of this you'll be voting on tonight, and this goes to reduce the tax rate and set the final rate. But again, the total amount to be raised minus all of those other revenue sources leaves a tax levy amount, the amount to be raised in taxes, of $16,905,000. Okay, so tax levy and the tax rate. So we've already determined the levy is $16,905,000. The total taxable town value, which we talked about earlier, was $915,000,000. You divide the tax levy by the taxable value, and it yields a tax rate or a quotient of $18.47 per $1,000 valuation. That's it. It's really that simple. It's all basic mathematics. It's not-- okay, that's where it comes from. So our-- bear with me a second. So this year's levy is $16,905,000. Last year's levy was $16,185,000. That's an overall increase in revenue, in tax revenue, over last year of $722,000-- I'm sorry, $720,000, or 4.45%. From that, you would subtract the new growth, and that'll give you the increase after new growth of $515,000 or 3.18% to existing taxpayers. Levy limit and excess levy capacity. Prop Two and a Half, what is it? Well, it's the law that was passed that it defines a levy ceiling, which is the amount, maximum allowable you can raise in taxes. Levy ceiling is 2.5% of your total town value. That doesn't apply to us because it's-- the amount is much higher than we raise. And it defines the levy limit. What is the levy limit and the maximum allowable tax levy? Basically, it's last year's levy limit plus a 2.5% increase, plus your new growth, and that'll equal your levy limit. To that, you could add voter-approved debt exclusions or overrides, and that'll equal your maximum allowable tax levy. What is excess levy capacity? It's the maximum allowable levy minus the actual tax levy. And for the town of Southbridge, these are the numbers. Last year, our levy limit was $16,453,000. The 2.5% increase is $411,000. The new growth is $205,000. So the 2013 maximum allowable levy and levy limit would be $17,070,000. This excess levy limit-- excuse me, I need a drink. Pardon me for a moment. I seem to get a cold or laryngitis once a year, and it's right before this presentation, I think. So the excess levy capacity is the additional amount that a town is allowed to raise in property tax under the limits of Prop Two and a Half, but chose not to. Although the town's ability to raise its maximum allowable levy next fiscal year is not affected, this amount will be lost this year. So for 2013, we could raise $17,070,000. The town is actually raising $16,905,000 under Prop Two and a Half, so there's an excess levy capacity of $164,798. After you vote on the agenda items 9, 10, and 11, I'll be passing around a form for your signatures. This is to attest that a public hearing on classification was held, and you have been informed of the excess levy capacity and the classification options. Classification factor. Mass General Law, Chapter 4056, requires the town to adopt a minimum factor between 1 and the minimum residential factor, the maximum shift of 50% to the CIP classes. So again, based on the percentage of residential to CIP, that minimum residential factor calculates to 85.851690. What that means is that would shift, if we decided to do it, to the maximum, 50% to the commercial classes. The council may adopt that factor, the minimum residential factor, or 1, a single tax rate, or any number in between. And now we'll give some examples of what would happen with a shift in the tax rate. Okay, you see a tiny, tiny chart up there, and I've presented it to you all here. A larger copy is in the back. And the next slide will break down parts of this, so it's actually readable. So as that slide up there attests, with a single tax rate of $1847, the average single-family property tax bill will be $3,019. The average commercial value-- the average commercial property tax will be $9,547, and the average industrial property tax will be $9,629. Bear with me. If the town were to, just using the maximum shift of 50%, shifted to the maximum, the residential class could save about $440,000, I think it is, and $447,000. So if we shifted it to the maximum, the residential property tax would go to $2571, a savings of $447,000. However, the average commercial property would go up by $4,776, and the average industrial would go up by $4,817. And again, as I said during the public hearing, it's because there is a much smaller percentage of commercial and industrial property. So to save-- I'm not going to say a small amount, but to save some money for the single families, it would really unduly burden, in our opinion, the commercial-industrial classes. Okay, so this slide here, again, I know it's hard to read. You have a copy of this in the back that's pretty-- that's been enlarged, and I'll be getting to breakdowns on this for the people at home to see. But the changes from last year. In condominiums, the average property tax this year with a single rate is going to be $1,442. That's an increase of $65,000, or 4.78%. Okay? Now, as I said before, based on the value changes that occur every year, different properties get treated differently. Condos are a good example. This year, their property taxes are going up by 4.78%. However, last year, the average tax bill for a condo decreased $123,000, or 8.19%. So, you know, just using that as an example, every class changes differently. But several years ago, multifamilies were going down for a number of years, and then multifamily property values caught fire, so they were going up 15% a year. It just meant they picked up the burden of somebody else, and that's just-- that's the lodge, the nature of it. Okay? Single families, like I said, they're going to-- their property tax this year, the average one, will be $3,019, an increase of 2.38%. That's about a percent less than the overall average in town. The interesting thing about single families is about half of the properties in Southbridge are single-family properties, and about half of the town value is single-family properties. So if they're going up, their taxes are going up a percent less than the others, that means the others all have to pick up that percent. And if they're a much smaller class, they get hit a little-- much more dramatically. Okay? I'm not going to read every number, but I'm just using it for illustration. Two families are going to go up about 3.62%, three families about 4.19%. Oh, and one other thing. When I say the average, what that really means to is, and this is how the state determines these numbers, it's the total value of each class of property divided by the number of parcels. That'll give you an average value. If you look at the single family, the average value of a single-family property is $163,000, and multiplied by the tax rate, that'll give the average tax. And that's a unit of comparison that every town in the state uses, so for consistency. Okay, the next chart is, just a continuation of the change from the prior year. Over four-unit apartment buildings, and this is four family, all the way up to Rosemead, for example, their property tax is going to go up about 7.5% on average. Commercial properties are going to go up about 12%, and industrial is about 3.8%. Again, part of this is because some properties were reclassified from industrial to commercial, and all it takes is one million-dollar property to add to that class, and it increases the average value, thus the average tax. Okay? So it's-- not every property is going up 12%. Some are barely going up at all, but on average. Classification. It's the continued belief of the Board of Assessors that a shift in tax burden is not conducive to a solid-- I'm trying to word this correctly. It's our recommendation that we have a single tax rate, a factor of one. I'll leave it at that. This would yield, based on what we've already talked about, a tax rate of $18.47 per $1,000 valuation. And tax-wise, how do we compare? Now, we're unique, but I also like to give everybody an idea of how we compare to other towns. How do these numbers all compare to other towns and statewide? According to the statistics from the Department of Revenue last year, and I have to use last year's because only about 100 communities have a set tax rate so far, so there's no way to do it for now, but using last year's numbers, the average single-family property tax statewide last year was $4,711. The average property tax bill in Southbridge last year was $2949. That means Southbridge was $1,762 less than, or 37% less than, the state average. For 2012, Southbridge ranked 278th out of the 338 analyzed communities that the DOR does in the state in regards to the smallest average single-family tax bill. It puts us in the lowest, 17.8% in terms of average single-family tax burden. Again, last year, the average single-family tax bill in Southbridge was $2949. This chart here simply shows that the green number on the top, in 1994, the average tax bill statewide-- excuse me, 1993, statewide was $1,993, and in Southbridge, it was $1,415. You can see that all across the state, there has been growth. Tax bills have been going up, and you can see it in the chart below that, the same thing in Southbridge. The only thing unique about this chart is Southbridge is still well below the state average, and the chart indicates that Southbridge's growth, I think, has been less than the state as a whole. These are our communities, area communities around here for this year, who've already set their tax rates. Southbridge, our tax rate will calculate, and this is subject to Department of Revenue approval, but at $1847, which in our average tax bill will be $3,019. Sturbridge, this year, they split their tax rate again. So their residential tax rate is $1795. Their commercial tax rate is $2138. That yields an average single-family property tax bill of $4,570, plus they have a 3% CPA, Community Preservation Act, adjustment. So that $4,570 is their property tax, and you add on-- there's some things that go into it, but whatever you pay, 3% more goes to CPA. Charlton, their tax rate is lower, $1,230. Their average tax bill is $3140. Holland, $1,561. Average tax bill is $3,020. Dudley, their tax rate is $1,156. Their average tax bill is $2349. God bless them. This is something that people have asked me over time. Our tax rate is so high, we-- you know, we pay more than everyone else. I put this in, and please look at the words in red, "illustration only." It's simply to illustrate that the tax rate is one part of it, the valuation is the second part of it. It's what you pay. These other communities there, I've been through some of them. Alfred, I don't even know where it is. I simply use it as a-- know where it is, I simply use it as an illustration. Southbridge, our tax rate is 1,847, tax bill is 3,019. Okay? Alfred, their tax rate is 437, but their tax bill, average tax bill, is very similar to ours. This town of Sherburne, a very wealthy town, their, their property values are very, very high. Their tax rate is similar to ours, but their average tax bill is 13,000. Again, no comparison to Southbridge, other than to illustrate the point. Wilbraham, their average, their tax rate is 1966, tax bill 5,405. Long Meadow, the same thing. It's simply to illustrate the point. It's what comes out of your wallet. That's all I try to do. Tax exemptions and help. Southbridge offers all of the statutory exemptions. I won't get into all of the details here, but anybody who thinks they may qualify, want some more information, just give me a call tomorrow. I'm more than happy to talk about any and every one of these. There are exemptions for seniors, for disabled veterans, as certified by the VA. Southbridge has a senior tax abatement program, probably one of the, what's the word to put this? A model for the area. We have a number of people, probably far more participants than any town I know of, other than the really huge ones, and we might even have more than them. We've increased the amount offered this year from $500 to $600. Basically, seniors apply, put an application in, and they help out, or they volunteer in various departments over the course of a year, and they earn a abatement or a rebate off of their taxes every year. It's a great program. We have people who've been doing it for years. It's financially good for them, it's socially good for them, great program. Again, I remind you, you're going to have some agenda items to vote on, on the classification factors. Our board has a recommendation on those, on those. We recommend the single tax rate. The votes are, one's an affirmative vote, yes to a single rate, and the other is a negative vote to say, no, we don't want multiple rates. You'll see it in your, on the, on the agenda items. This, the PowerPoint presentation has a timer on this, and it must be an error. It says, I've been going for 30 minutes and 28 seconds. I apologize. But it's, really, I want this, we all, the board wants the citizens to know where that's, where it comes from, and how it's determined. Thank you. Any questions?
Counsel Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just quickly, actually, your last slide, Will, I, I know we're not at the max allowed for the senior tax abatement program yet. We did increase it, but not to the max allowed. As far as the income requirements for any of those other exemptions, are we at the max allowed under statute, or?
Yeah, we use the statutory amount.
Okay. So whenever they increase?
Yeah, every year, that's a good question. Every year, when the social security allowance, for example, goes up, last year, I believe it went up 3.36 percent, the income allowance goes up by the corresponding amount, not only for social security, but other, for other retirement programs as well. But we go up every year based on that.
Good. Thank you.
Counsel McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, first, just an observation. When you use the comparison of communities, this is based solely on numbers. Sherburne, that's a community of 3,500 people on the outskirts of Boston, where the average lot size is one to three acres. So they're paying a high rate, and they're paying 13,000 because their community meets that definition, or meets that criteria for the expensive nature of what it is. They're close to Boston for the commute. To compare that to Southbridge really says that our tax rate's too high, when you look at it that way. Because, and even when you look at the other slide here, Southbridge versus Sturbridge, Charlton, Holland, and Dudley, Southbridge has 60 percent multifamily dwellings, whereas these other communities are all single-family homes. So their tax rate's lower, their average tax bill's higher, because, again, I would say that, on average, they don't have postage stamp-sized properties, they have bigger properties, and they're out in rural areas. I don't think the comparison here, I think we should have been compared, like Webster should be on here, and, you know, maybe Wilbraham or Palmer, because those communities are more consistent with the demographics of this community. Just an observation. I had asked during the hearing, I just want to be clear here, so we're looking at, what we're recommending is going from $17.83 per thousand to 1,847, which is an increase of $1.33 per thousand on the taxpayers. Is that correct?
I don't think so. 1783, 1,847, whatever that comes to.
I'm sorry, 33, is it?
60 cents.
Yeah.
Yeah, 64 cents. That's what I'm sorry, yeah.
It's less of amount, yeah. And it's not that we're, what we're recommending, that's what the math comes out to, as I showed.
Okay, when you say, that's a good, that's a good point, and thank you for correcting my math, I looked at the wrong number. When you say, that's what the numbers come out to, what you're saying is, is that the budget that we set in May is determining this, and why, in order for, to meet, well, that's, that, I saw you shake your head, yes, so I want to make sure, that, is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
That, that is correct. It's a good observation, but at the time when the budget was set in May, the prediction in Mr. Clark's budget packet was a percent, he predicted this, the prediction was a percent higher than this on the tax levy. It's actually less than he presented at the time. And I might want to add, because I, well, actually, I don't want to add, I don't want to ask, answer a question you're not asking, but if you have any question about the tax rate, I, people have asked me in the past, I am going to answer it, I apologize, but it, it's a really good, good point. People say, well, can't you predict what the tax rate's going to be six months in advance? No, that's like asking us to predict, what's the weather going to be on June 22nd? It might rain, it might not. Because the half of this equation is the sum of the property, of, of the sum of the valuation of every single property in a town, whatever the tax levy is, that you can predict nine, you know, six months before. But what's, what's the, what 6,000 property is going to add up to? That's the equation. It's impossible. There is not one town in the state, it's just not possible to do. That's, I know you didn't answer that, I apologize.
Well, it, it sort of did, thank you, because it leads me to my next question, which would be this. I don't understand how come we're doing our budget that way, because most communities do it the other way around. I mean, really, what this here is for, is to set the number of, what the tax rate's going to be for our next budget, not for what we already did. And if we formulated a budget back in May, based on some future number, we did it wrong. Because if that, if that's not the case, then why do other communities, when they vote their line item, they say, vote to set a tax rate of X dollars and cents? You shake your head, no. I mean, how can you, how can, you can't spend something before you've earned it. You have to take it, you get your tax rate set, and that determines what your money's going to be, what your budget's supposed to be. Otherwise, there would be no such thing as a level-funded budget. You get a level-funded budget based upon the amount of money that you're getting from the previous year. We've, we sit there, if we look at developing a budget, other communities are still developing level-funded budgets, yet we're, we're increasing every year and a half for the last three years. Just enough, that's.
Madam Chair, the only reason for shaking my head is that this is fiscal year 13, this is setting the tax rate for fiscal year 13. We do the budget in May for fiscal year 13. You set the tax rate in December. Every city in town has to do, basically, some version of this. Some may go in April, some may go in June. We happen to go in May for setting the budget for July 1st, so you always set the budget prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. The tax rate actually does get set in most communities around this December time span and in the places that I've been. So it's not, it, it is one budget, but you do set, to your point, the budget is set, basically, before the fiscal year starts, the tax rate is set in, basically, in the middle of the fiscal year.
Well, there's, there's no, I'll, I'll reserve it for when we come to the vote on it. Thank you.
Counsel Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a point of clarification, when we're, when we are setting the budget, we use a, setting the tax rate is what we're doing now. We can estimate the amount of taxes we are going to raise. We do that in May, because we know what our previous year levy limit was. We know what 2.5 percent of that is, we add that on, and then we ask our assessors to estimate new growth, and we always try and squeeze a little more out of them. That number is, is an estimate that, yes, we can use, the total tax levy, and that is the huge part of the budget-setting process. But as far as the rate goes, that's what we're doing now. Well, actually, we don't set the rate. We're just setting, we're, our only vote is to either set a, one, single tax rate, factor of one, or to split it. That is our only, you know, horse in this, in this race. So we don't set the tax rate back in May. We estimate an amount, a total amount of the tax levy, and then the rate gets set now, based on the full and fair cash value, you, you divide it into all of that fun stuff that Will has so much fun with. But that total amount, yes, we do estimate a budget time. That's the only way you can set a budget.
Counsel McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, then, that concerns me even more, because what we're doing, then, is we're saving back in May and setting up already. And I said this before, because I said it back in May, not just this time, I said it the year before and the year before. And I distinctly remember Counsel Regis one year saying, you don't do that now, you do that in December. But here we are in December, saying, no, because we did this, and we estimated it right, then we should know exactly where we're going to be in December, because we're awfully close here. So when we say, no, this budget's a little bit inflationary, we should keep it the same, then we should vote a more responsible budget, so that we're not automatically coming here in December and saying, well, this is the budget we voted, so now we have to raise taxes again. I've never been in favor of that. And when we end up with things like what happens the year before, we ended up with an extra $172,000 to get a sweep we didn't budget for. This past year, it was $125,000 for one backhoe, $125,000 for another backhoe, and then $120,000 for a lawnmower. That's $370,000 we built into the budget, padded. It wasn't bare bones, because bare bones means you have just enough to get what you've budgeted for. And it's not fair to the taxpayers to see their top property values going down, and they're paying more for less-valued property. When I go and get my car, it's brand-new, I pay more excise tax when I buy it, and the more it gets used and the more it depreciates, the less tax I get. They don't raise the tax rate on my car individually, so they can get the same amount of money out of me. We shouldn't be doing it for people's taxes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anybody else have anything to add to this?
I have a question.
Counsel Powell, come on.
I was just wondering if you could explain how the new growth figure is calculated from slide number 17 and 19, the $205,000?
Sure. Let me find it. What slide did you say?
I saw that number on 17 and 19. You're going backwards.
17, well, actually, the, I am.
Is it at the beginning?
Believe me when I say this, I know this stuff intimately, I'm just going to find it. New growth is, is valued this way, is calculated this way. Every single property that we go to, you see residential new growth, $3,712,000 in value, that generates $66,000. We have to, if somebody builds a new shed, or new garage, okay, that new garage is now valued at $3,000. That $3,000 becomes part of that $3,712,000. Somebody builds a new house, that hundred and whatever thousand dollars goes into that. There's a new subdivision, that split of one lot into several goes into that. So whatever they calculate in value, times, and this is all by law, it's not anything we do uniquely here, whatever that total of that new value is, times last year's tax rate, so $3,007,000 times last year's tax rate, equals $66,000 in residential new growth. Same thing in commercial, same thing in industrial. Personal property, new, personal property new growth is the biggest part of it, and, excuse me, the biggest part of this actually comes from utilities, things like National Grid, Verizon, and so forth. When they put out new equipment into a community, that.
Is that personal property, then, when they do that?
Yeah, personal property is a very nondescriptive term. Personal property is actually business property in most communities. That's, the term is very contradictory, but, so, again, whatever is added, that becomes new growth. A, a good example would be, if you had a 10-acre lot valued at $100,000, and you subdivide it into 10 one-acre lots at $50,000, well, it's now worth $500,000. Your base was $100,000, so that's $400,000, $400,000 in new growth. I made up the example, just for illustration, but this is another thing that I just got certified last week, and, believe me when I say this, I had somebody from the Department of Revenue, we were going all, go over, going over all of these in detail, but that's where they all come from.
Are these, how do you gather the information for new growth? Is it done by way of looking at the building permits, or?
Another good question. Everybody who takes out a building permit in a community, either myself or a member of my staff goes out and visits. I was just at, last week, I was at like seven or eight inspections where, before they could get their occupancy permit, I have to go in, and I look at them all, they might be, they might be, I don't know, renovation of a house, they might be an addition, they may be a number of things. One interesting thing on this new growth here, it just came to mind while we were talking about it. In the tornado of two, two years ago, there was, I believe, about $2 to $3 million in lost value to the town, based on all the damage. A lot of properties, again, I, I bring up numbers just for illustration, but if you had a house that was valued at $150,000, and due to damage, it might have gone down to $100,000. So it came off of our, off of our base. Not only did it, in the year that it happened, our base went down, so we had to make up that $50,000 in value that we lost because of the damage, before you got to your new base and started last year's new growth. Well, a year later, there's been a lot of building permits where people have, I mean, there's been houses where they demolished and rebuilt. So last year, that demolished house lowered our, lowered our base before you get to new growth, but now there's a brand-new house there. I can think of several examples of that. There's a brand-new house. So it went from maybe $30,000 in land value to now $100,000, $150,000. That's $120,000 in new growth value, times whatever the tax rate was.
Thank you, Mr. Canoyer.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Citizens Forum. Do we have any citizens in the audience wishing to come forward?
Good evening. Monique Manna, 20 Maple Street. I'm just here tonight to, because I want to thank everyone that came out and helped with all the Christmas decorations and the festivities that we had on November 25th, with the parade and Santa Claus coming. It was a lot of fun, a lot of excitement. I do have a list of people I'd like to go through. I'm first going to thank Rudy de Gregorio, the Marshall Morris family, the Peter Canoyer family, Lenny Laporte of Laporte Electric, Judy Ferguson of Village Photo, D and D Weldon, DJ Pat Spinelli, Brandon Venick and Chorus, Southbridge Hotel and Conference Center, the Southbridge Savings Bank, the Southbridge Cub Scout PAC 140, the X2 Ministry Chorus, High Tools, Chief Charette, Ed Trainer, the Southbridge Fire Department, the Southbridge Police Department, and the Auxiliary Unit, Dessa Paint, G. Marie Flores of Aspera, along with her group of students, Bill Belanger and the Belanger-Bullard Funeral Home, Dan Grabowski, Roger Nastel-Cowett, Richard Cowett, Kathy Nicola, Janelle and Mike Zuziak, Diane and Dave Langlois and family, Maria Nevez, Mrs. Lamikov, Suzie Gies, Florencia Saz-Germano, Danielle Plou, Gillian Clark, Gillian and Clark Harris, Maria Bernard, Mason Clemmons, Evelyn Bittrelli, Dick and Peg Whitney, Ethan Plou, Bill Nass, Larry and Bonnie Spinelli, Kelly and Pat Spinelli, and all of Santa's helpers, and of course, Santa Claus himself, Mr. Rivenider. So it was, it was a great event. We had a wonderful turnout. We thank goodness the wind died down that evening, because it was very cold out. And come January, we will be looking for help to take everything down. Thank you very much.
And I'd like to thank you and Denise Clemmons for your very large participation in this. It was wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other citizens wishing to come forward?
My name is Cheryl Ortiz, and I live at 151 Hamilton Street, and I'm coming to the Town Council, hoping that somebody here can give me some help. Some months ago, we had gotten a card in the mail saying that they wanted to change our water meter, and it was completely free, please call this number. So when we called, they came to the house, and they said, oh, you're going to need to hire a plumber to change this and that, and then we can change this. So I said, okay, then don't. So I said, "Okay, then don't do it," because I can't afford to hire a plumber, and the paper said it was for free. And they said, "Well, it is, the meter is free. But if you don't pay for this and you have a leak, then basically, you're going to have to call us and let your water be gushing for a certain amount of time before we can get around to getting there, then you're going to have to pay us plus pay a water bill." So I said, "Again, don't touch it, leave it alone for now, because now I have to have the money to pay a plumber." So we just let it go because we knew the summer was coming and we'd be going away, and I just couldn't afford to do it. So over the summer, we were gone for 25 days, and there was nobody in my house, but we do have a neighbor who checks on the house every, basically every day. And there were no problems before we left. My husband shut everything in the house off. Like, we have a freezer, we disconnected it, we left everything, made sure everything was unplugged, and we left. On September 11th, I came home to a yellow card saying, "Please call, you're using an excessive amount of water." And I thought, "Okay." I called. And they said, "You're really using an excessive amount of water, you must have a leak in your house." And I said, "I don't have a leak in my house." And they said, "Well, you're going to have a huge water bill coming your way." And I said, "I want you to know, we have been gone for 25 days. I'm expecting a very small water bill as I expect a small electric bill, gas bill, because we have not, there are six of us, we, nobody's been home." So they said, "Well, something's very wrong. We're going to come back and read your meter again, and you didn't change your water meter." And I went through the whole deal again. "I didn't change it because you told me that I was going to have to..." No, you don't have to pay the plumber, but if you don't pay the plumber, then, but this is my point. I need the money to pay a plumber. "Well, you're going to have a huge water bill." I said, "Okay, what could possibly be leaking in my house?" They said, "Oh, the toilets, my toilets aren't leaking." So they said, "Okay, go put dye in the tank, then check it. If the toilet's leaking and you don't know it, the dye is going to come out and you're going to see it, no problem." That night, I put dye in the toilets, woke up the next morning, there was nothing leaking. So then they said, "Okay, this person was going to come back." And then I asked also, that next day, "Tell me how to read the water meter. I need to see this for myself. Tell me where it is." They explained to me, I went down to the basement, they said, "Is the little thing spinning around?" No, it's not. So then I decided, "Okay, I'm going to write down the numbers and see if I can get a handle on what's going on." So I wrote down the numbers. The next day, the guy came back, and she said, "Well, you can hire a plumber to go through your house and find out what's leaking." And I said, "Again, you know, I have to come up with money to hire a plumber, to come in to see if the plumber can find something that's leaking, but it's not obvious that anything is leaking in my house." She said, "We'll have, when the guy comes in to look at the meter, we'll have him see if he can find anything. Please do." So they came back, went through my house, found nothing leaking. That day miraculously, my water meter was fixed. Because, I'm not going to say a leak in my house, there was no leak in my house, I don't believe there was. So from the day they told me that to the day the guy came back, the number changed with 453. Since then, every single day, I have gone faithfully to my basement, and I make an Excel spreadsheet to put my water, to see what I use every single day, okay? So on average, since September 13, when the miracle happened, because then I did set the appointment for them to come and change my meter for fear. So I paid the plumber $150 to come in and change what they said I had to change in order not to lose my house because of my water bill, which they didn't find, again, they found nothing. Since then, I can tell you, since September, on average, I use 28.5 of whatever this, the units are, fine. So I sat down and I got my water bill, $1,707, for 81 days' worth of water. So I went back to 2010, pulled out my water bills. We have had up to nine people living at my house at one time. Currently, we have six, so we're down. We should be down on our water. When I sat there and I calculated, went through every single bill, calculated, how many days, how much, how many of these units do I use? It is, going back to 2010, this 81 days of water bill that I've got is the equivalent of 594 days, okay? We're talking 18 months' worth of water that I normally use, I got in one bill. So they said, "Well, you can file this abatement. Come and see if you're, you're..." They took out the meter and they said, "You can come and watch us push the water through." Okay. I came here, they said, "You can file an abatement." I came, explained everything the best I could. They said, you know, "We'll send it right down." You know, again, the gentleman here said, "Oh, maybe your toilets..." We went through this whole thing, and I'm saying, "This is how it is." You know, I put the dye in the toilets, there's nothing. No plumber came in. This is a miraculously healing of my meter. So I sent it all down. I just got a letter back saying, "Sorry, ma'am, you can't prove you didn't use it, so pay it." I'm not an engineer, I'm a teacher. But what I do know is, how do I go about, how do I prove to you I didn't use the water? I didn't have a plumber, there's nothing leaking in my house. But they're telling me that I have to prove that I didn't use... How do I go about proving I didn't spend $1,700 on water? Do I lose my house because of this kind of a water bill? No compassion, no, engineers are telling me, "You need to prove to us." So I need to become an engineer in order to prove to them that I really didn't use this. So now I'm here, begging for somebody to help me so I don't lose my house.
I see everyone looking at me, so I guess I'll start. First off, Christopher Clark, obviously Town Manager, let me, let me look in and try to get some details in terms of what's transpired, and certainly, some of the things that you've, you've talked about are not things that I want to see out of this organization, and that is, that is of concern. On water issues, and we've had different water issues, I, you know, we would really have to kind of do some investigation to find out how old the house is, you know, are there other lines?
115 years old.
I'm sorry?
115 years old.
115 years old?
Big house on the corner, Hamilton and Edwards.
Because my, my first instinct in your, in your question is that the town is, is responsible really from the line, the line in the street, then the homeowner brings it into the meter, and then from the meter, it goes through. If there's a leak before the meter, then that doesn't go through the meter and the homeowner doesn't pay for it. So the fact that it may be going through the meter and you get a higher bill is something that is, it could be somewhere in the house. We have had one case in the time that I've been here in which a homeowner had a sprinkler system. The house was fine, the line going out to the sprinkler system had a leak in it, and they were using the water in the yard versus in the house. So there are different circumstances that sometimes play a role. But instead of trying to, for me to guess tonight, I would like to...
It's cured. You know, because if it was still leaking, I would say, "Okay, but how did, how did this miraculously..." You know, and I was told, "Is it intermittent?" But if it's intermittent, we're talking three months, in a three-month period, it has never gone off at all again.
Okay. I'm not, all what I'm saying is, I'd like to have an opportunity to meet with staff and look into specifically, you're 150 Hamilton Street?
151.
151. And, and we will, and I will, I will make sure I get back to you personally, ma'am, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just in answer to one of your questions about, you know, what can you do to prove you didn't use it? You did say you went away for a certain number of days. You know, if you have ways to show that you were not in the...
I have passports for...
Sure. Well, I'd say that, and possibly, you know, even so far as statements from, from people that you know and whatnot, and then perhaps, I mean, I don't know what timeframe you left and whether or not your outside faucets were on. Perhaps this is a case of stolen services or whatever.
Well, they, that was one of, one of the things they brought up to me, is they said, "Did you fill a swimming pool?" I said, "I don't have a swimming pool." Do you have neighbors that have swimming pools? It might have used your water. If you see where the outside faucet of my house is, it's on Hamilton Street. You, Sean, it's on Hamilton Street. So for, the only people in the entire neighborhood that had, had a swimming pool were three houses down, which theirs broke, so they didn't have a swimming pool. But for them to steal my water, they would have had to, I think, get the fire department with fire hoses to go way down, because it's that, you know, like I said, there's a faucet in front of Hamilton Street, where the house with the pool was is down the back, way down the other side. So it's not, you know, and again, if I thought it was possible with my neighbor, he's an elderly man, and he, can I tell you, he does the walkthrough of my entire house every day that we're not there. Because one time, we were away in something very minimal, and he was calling us, "What do you think of this? Is this okay?" But it's not, you know, and again, it was from the day they, they, they sent me the card to two days later, we had used this 453. So we, you know, and again, I was like, "Okay, so it's not suddenly, when I was gone, somehow somebody stole all of my water." But it was still this massive leak, but then, again, you know, in three months' time that I've tracked it every single day, there's no, I can tell you the days that I wash clothes because I know it's slightly up, the days nobody washed clothes, it's down. You know, it's that close, so it's, it is very consistent. And I haven't seen, I was hoping I would see something out of the ordinary, but in three months' time, I haven't.
Counselor?
I'm just trying to piece part of it together. So really, when this meter change took place, you said miraculously, everything kind of stopped, but prior to really the solicitation, you never experienced or saw a problem? Were, do you have the flyer, this original solicitation at all, or?
It was, it was, it was sent, I know it was sent everywhere because at my mother's house, it was the same thing. It was a flyer that was sent all around, you know, and they told me, "You don't have a choice, you are going to have to change this meter. You don't have a choice."
Is, threw you to the Town Manager, is that something the town had sent out? I don't recall seeing one myself anyways.
I do.
We actually underga, we underwent a process to change out all the meters. So we had old meters that were in various things, and if my memory serves, I think if you have meters that are 10 to 15 years old, then they tend to potentially go faulty. So we went through and changed out all the residential meters within the last probably year and a half, which is the program you're referring to.
But they told, they told me that it had to be changed because they were going, they didn't want to, they didn't, weren't going to look at the meters anymore. It was a gunpoint.
It's remote, remote, remote meter reading. That's correct.
And that's why I had to change.
That's the program I'm referring to. I, I would like just to, there probably are, you know, 100 different ways that this thing could, could happen. I've had some success when I've looked to find people, you know, the issue that, that exists, and I'm, I'm happy to look in, and, and, you know, you're welcome to be included, and we'll see what we can find out and see if, what's going on.
Because if I calculated what I would have expected to receive for a water bill, would have been $205.
Okay.
Did you want to say something? Go ahead.
Mrs. Orger, only because I went through a similar situation just recently, and I have to ask, when, how, how long, when you got that yellow card, was that right when you came back from vacation?
No, no.
How far?
It was, we got back August 16, and it was September 11.
So it was a whole nother month after that?
So it was almost a whole month, yeah.
Because I went through a similar situation with a tenant where I, I got an exorbitant water bill. I got two, actually, one that was from the March through June, and then one June through... Actually, we discovered there was a problem when I was, when I got that first bill, and then they did another reading. I said, "This can't be right," you know, and they said, "We'll do another reading." And they did, and they said, "Oh, your bill's going..." It was only beginning of August, so it'd only been just over a month. They said, "Your bill's going to be even higher in the $1,000 range." I said, "How can that be? I just had almost $1,000 for that quarter." Called the tenant, "Is there something running?" Nope, nothing is running. And it did turn out to be a leak, a leaky toilet, which, the reason I point this out is because it's possible, and I'm not, I sympathize, trust me, I just went through it. It's possible when you, if you didn't officially shut all the water off when you left for that 25 days or month or whatever, is it possible that something could have been, you know, if that plunger doesn't go straight down, you know, it, it could run, and you'd be amazed at how much water can get used.
No, I don't believe, you know, like I said...
Yeah, I'm just telling what I, yeah, and I got to pay it, luckily me.
That was, that was one of the things they brought up, but I said, you know, my husband went through the house, but my neighbor went through the house.
Yeah. But if your neighbor peed and flushed the toilet, you know, you never know. I mean, it's hard to, I'm just, I'm just giving you my scenario, but I do feel for you because it was...
But the thing is, even when we came back, it was, like I said, in a two-day period, 453.
Right.
As opposed to in the 20s.
Yeah.
It was still the...
Yeah, it's very frustrating, I, from my own experience recently, so I'm sorry to hear that. Hopefully, they'll figure out what happened with you.
Please, please do get, contact the two of you together and get this straightened out, please. And I would like personally, a little follow-up for us to see what happened. Counselor Regis?
Are we reading the whole town on, on the new radio reads now? Well, is it all the new?
Personally, all...
So, I mean, it may just be a technology issue, too. If, if you read, we do the entire town, correct? I'm sorry, yeah, just the process, if I can understand, because different communities do it differently?
Yeah, we read the entire town four times a year. I don't think at the time she's talking, she had a radio read meter at that point. As she said, they replaced it after, after that. Now we're at 90 to 95 percent complete.
Right, but if, if they're going through the town and doing the radio reads and don't accurately record that she doesn't have a new meter, I mean, there's kickouts, and then you go back and do your re-reads, but if they didn't physically go in and read her meter, which they couldn't have because she wasn't home, right? She was gone. I mean, that, it could just be one of those issues, too.
I'm not really sure, but they were trying to replace that meter, and they find, they have now.
Yeah.
So prior to her bringing the problem up, it was still the old meter.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just to the point of the meters, in my experience here, that if a meter reads high, usually, old ones run slower, so it's actually to the benefit of the homeowner. The new ones run accurate, so sometimes people will get a, a higher bill. But usually, if there's a complaint about the meter, we will test that and have it, you know, shop-tested to check the accuracy to see if it's within the tolerances. But I will check. I, I think this is one that definitely deserves a, a looksee, and let's get back to counsel and see what's going on.
Right, because during, I mean, during the, the billing process, if there's, you usually do comparisons, and there's kickouts, and then you go back and do actual re-reads just to make sure they're accurate prior to billing, so that's my experience anyway.
I think that's right.
Are there any other citizens, citizens wishing to come forward? And I'm going to move on. Agenda item number nine. Vote to establish a tax classification factor of 1.0 for tax purposes. The Board of Assessors recommends a yes vote for a single tax rate.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Landevan?
Yes.
Counsel Marucci?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel Moriarty?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Paliquin?
Yes.
Counsel Regis?
Yes.
Counsel Vandal?
Yes.
Counsel Clemmons?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Ten. Vote to adopt varied classifications of property for tax purposes, including open space discount and residential exemption. The Board of Assessors recommends a no vote.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Marucci?
No.
Counsel McDonald?
No.
Counsel Moriarty?
No.
Counsel Nicola?
No.
Counsel Paliquin?
No.
Counsel Regis?
No.
Board of Health, I'm sorry, Board of Assessors recommends a yes vote.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question is, what happens if we vote no on this agenda item? If, let's say that this was to fail, what would happen?
Well, from what Mr. Canoyer told us, the single property owner would see a decrease of 400 and something odd dollars, and commercial property would see an increase of almost five grand. Am I accurate in that?
You can vote a factor of 1.0 a single tax rate, or all the way up to the maximum, or anything in between. If you kind of don't do any of the votes, we won't have a tax rate, and we'll kind of be in limbo for a while until that gets determined. That's really what it comes out to.
DOR, I believe, will just remand it back to us until we vote it, and the tax bills will just be delayed until such time as these votes are completed. And just, the first vote was actually to do the factor of one. This is really just a confirmation of that first vote.
No, follow-up, tell us.
Go ahead.
I disagree. This is the setting of the tax rate, and what we should be able to do here is have a number in there, and we should be able to keep the tax rate the same, and then what happens is DOR won't certify it until we go back and balance the budget to match those numbers. So therefore, I move that we amend Agenda Item Number 11, vote to adopt a single tax rate of $17.83 for all classes of property. That's my motion.
Second up motion. Is there any discussion regarding that? I have a question for the expert. Does that work?
I suppose it does, if you, if you want to try not to get a tax rate set, that's all it does.
As you can.
That's all it would do.
It's an, it's an execution of math. We had an appropriation, we did the appropriation in May, we set the amount, and you take the valuation, you take the valuation amount, as Mr. Canoyer went through, by the budget that's already been approved, and that's how you set the tax rate. This motion is really almost out of order, because it should have in it that we want to reopen the budget and reduce the number necessary to get to that level, and it doesn't include that. So, as an execution of math, the budget has been set, the dollars have been appropriated, we've already commenced the expenditure of those dollars in this fiscal year. So, I don't believe that, you know, the intent of this, I mean, all it's going to facilitate is delaying setting the, setting the rate, and then potentially, you know, the council could, I guess theoretically, go in and cut the budget, understanding that we're already almost 50 percent of the way through to accomplish what's being attempted to be accomplished.
Counselor Clements?
So, through you to the town manager, if, if this had been an issue, or when this was an issue, it should have been appropriately taken up at the budget time.
That's correct.
And not currently.
That's correct.
So next year, when you set the budget again, if we want to be more mindful, or get the rate down, or whatever, then we should tell you that your budget isn't good, and find a way to reduce it before, to come out with what we're looking for come December of next year, basically.
Correct. I mean, the budget that was adopted in May had in there a projection, and really just a projection, that the tax rate would go up by 4.2 percent, in that range, and the tax rate is going up 3.2. So, we do project, we do try to understand what the impact is going to be, to make sure the council is aware. In this case, we said, based upon the budget that was voted in May, the tax rate would go up by 4.2 percent, and we've been able to have the tax rate only go up by the 3.18 percent. So we actually were able to produce and deliver, which, in the time that I've been here, I've tried to do this each year, to have it be a little less than what was even anticipated in the budget presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things, and I'm not trying to collect, correct the town manager, because he's completely right, but the definitions are important here, I just want to make sure we walk away, not the tax rate, the tax levy is what we're talking about. The tax levy is what we can project very clearly at budget-setting time. The tax rate, you can't, and quite honestly, I'm going to say this again, the tax rate is not as, it's important, but it's not important for the matters at hand. People who know me, know me, I'm not a precision kind of person, I mean, I like, I round off the last six zeros when I'm talking about this, so don't get the wrong idea, but when I first, when I first took this full-time job, the tax rate for, I think, five years previously had been, what was the number, 1578, and boy, it looked good, if you want to just say, "Oh, the tax rate hasn't changed." And yet, there were some very large tax increases in there, as valuations went up and the tax rate stayed the same, everyone, you know, I like to peel off the layers of the onion here, there were tax rate, tax increases. I said it every year, and, you know, up here, but, you know, I want to make sure that's all clear, and so it was, I think, 1578 for like, six years in a row, and taxes were going up quite a bit at that point, and from 1998, I think, to 2001, 2003. And then a really cool thing happened, valuations went sky-high, and the tax rate dropped to 12 something or other. Wow, big tax decrease. No, I said it up here, taxes are going up this year, I can't remember the number, but several percent. So, you know, definitions are important here, I'm, the tax rate, yeah, it's vitally important, but the tax levy, that's what I pay out of my pocket, that's what I care about, and I think that's what most people care about.
Thank you. All right. Counselor Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The tax rate is going up 3.5 percent. The average single-family tax bill is going up 2.3 percent. It's not going up 3.5 percent, it's all relative. The, I mean, we still, we still leave excess, you know, we have excess levy capacity, we're still leaving money on the table. You know, I'm, I have a sick mind when it comes to this, I get as close to zero as possible, I play with that overlay number until I can get really close to zero. We still, we still have an amount of money that we could tax even more, but we choose not to do that, the administration chooses not to do that. I don't, I, my, this is only my opinion, but voting to adopt a single tax rate of the fiscal 12 rate, I think, I don't think I know would be detrimental, and just the jumping through hoops and putting that recap back together, our votes would have to, we would have to reduce the budget, I mean, what a, what a mess, what a mess. We have our stuff together here in Southbridge. We don't want the DOR to look at us and say, "What the hell is going on?" I don't want to be part of a council that, that they're going to look at us and say that, no way, no. We have our stuff together. You folks, the finance team, the town manager, you know, we, we have respect, and, from the DOR, and that's a huge thing, to me. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And then Counselor Moriarty.
It's really nice that we're leaving the people's money to themselves, I mean, come on, you know, I'm not, I'm not here to impress DOR. I'm here to work for the people who are struggling out there in this community, who, you know, I've heard several times over, I've sat on this council, or whether I watched meetings before I was on this council, and I've heard, "We haven't raised taxes in 13 years, we haven't raised taxes in this, and now we're saying we've raised taxes and the taxes have gone up." I remember back in May, when I asked about this, I said, "Your projections here show we're going to end up having to raise the, the tax rate about 4 percent or so," and you said, "Well, it's not, it's a guessing game, or it's not an accurate science, but we're almost right there in that number." And so what happens is, and it illustrates the point, we did not do our due diligence as far as for the taxpayer, and for the people who are struggling out there back in May. We go back and forth, I've been on it now through three iterations, at least two iterations of this, with, this is the time to do it when it's budget-setting in May, you do that in December, now we're in December, we should have done that back then, no, circular logic's got to stop. So, I would ask this council, who are going to be here in May, to remember this night for the citizens out there, who are having a very hard time. I asked earlier during the hearing, how many houses are in arrears? We've talked about short sales. A short sale doesn't factor into property valuations, because it's not a true assessment, but the majority, I'm willing to bet, of the houses that are in this community are short sales. They have to be. I know right now a person who's looking to move out of town, who's in the hole underwater $100,000. If they wanted to sell their home today, it would have to be a short sale. That also affects our property valuations as well. What the point is, is people are struggling, and we're going to sit there, and we're going to say, "Well, we could tax them more, so they should be happy with it." What? No. Shame on us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Moriarty?
So I've got two questions now. I'll rattle them both off before I lose it in my mind thought. One is through you to, to Will Canoyer, and, you know, I don't necessarily expect you have the number off the top of your head. If that amendment of essentially maintaining reverting to the fiscal 12 tax rate was to happen, what would be the fiscal shortfall between the budgets? And then, after that, through you to the manager, more so just a, whether it's confusion on my part, or what have you, we have, the next vote is an increase in the budget for fiscal 13. And that, that part just kind of, it slid by me until we started talking about kind of opening up the budget to decrease it. And again, maybe I'm, I'm kind of confused on that perhaps, but, so I, again, just kind of wanted to refer to Will, or to whomever, as far as what the shortfall would be, just out of curiosity, I imagine, you know, my wife's a cost accountant, I'm not, I figure out grades, that's about it, so I don't, I don't know what kind of number it is, but I would imagine it's probably a pretty hefty number.
It is, I mean, I'd be, I'd be, it would be irresponsible of me to throw out a number like that right here, I mean, but what would be irresponsible is if we don't set our tax rate in time by December 31st to mail out our tax bills. That would be irresponsible of all of us, especially in light of we're all, we have everything required, because what happens is, if you don't mail out your tax bills by December 31st, they're considered late, and they're not due until May 1st, and you get into a cash flow issue, which is, I'm not going to predict that, but I mean, suddenly you're not getting the money in in February that you were anticipating, and suddenly you have borrowing costs and all the other costs that go along with it. So, my own personal opinion, it, it would be irresponsible, that's all I can say. And I say that as a member of the Board of Assessors and a resident of Southbridge for all my life, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
I, I think, we would have to, staff would have to go back, and we would have to analyze what it would be, you know, in order to do it, I mean, in order of magnitude, it could be half million to a million dollars that we're talking about. The one comment I would like to make, though, is, when we set the budget, we set the budget based upon what does the council believe is adequate service levels, and we've set that budget, we set it based upon the need for a certain amount of those dollars in which to, to set that budget and to be able to operate, and now we're, we're going back and doing what people, you know, may have wanted to do in, in May. I remember the May vote, I don't believe, was unanimous. So, you know, it was a split council then, in terms of the number of people that wanted a certain service level, there were other members of the council that wanted to reduce those service levels in which to reduce taxes, but, reduce the levy to get the, to get to the tax rate. So, you know, but I think to go back at this point and try to, to take a reduction, you know, some of these bills we've already paid, you know, during the course of the year, now you're talking about taking that money out of basically a six-month cycle, and it's going to have a much more dramatic impact in, in the short term, not to mention the impact that it is going to have with the state. We are a subdivision of the state, and we need to work with the state. But I go back to, there was a decision made by the majority of this council, or the council sitting at the time, what service levels are adequate to the residents of Southbridge, and this budget is a reflection of that service level.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Counselor?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We were also told that we were going to need to replace a backhoe that was dire, because it was dangerous to operate, and then we find out that it's being operated.
Partially being operated, that's, that's a misrepresentation of the truth, Counselor.
I don't think it is.
Yeah, no, it is, it is, it is a very large misrepresentation of the truth.
Madam Chair, I believe I still have the floor.
Yeah. Well, please tell the truth, and not, you know, fiction, no.
The truth is, what I heard.
The truth is that the, the backhoe has been split in half.
May I speak, Madam Chair? I believe I have the floor.
Right.
Thank you.
And again, misrepresentation.
You call it what you want.
Yeah.
When we're told.
It is what it is.
That equipment is dangerous to the health of the operators in order to spend $120,000.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Is this, you know, again, this is, you're all over the map here.
I am answering.
You're all over the map.
I am answering what the manager said, I have a right to debate.
No, he doesn't.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'm here a representative of the people, and you would be infringing upon my First Amendment rights to represent them. The bottom line is.
Let's go. That's the bottom line.
Well, the bottom line is, is that.
You've grandstanding long enough.
No, it's not grandstanding.
Let's go. Yes, it is.
You call it what you want.
Finish your sentence.
My, when we were told that we had to spend $125,000, was, that was not budgeted for, it was not in that budget. That's $125,000 in the tax that we visited on people, that we didn't really need to visit on them, it was padded, that's my point. And when you add the other one, and then the $120,000 for a lawnmower, that adds up to almost a half a million dollars.
Right.
It is what it is. Thank you, Madam Chair.
It is what it is, and it's been explained to you ad nauseam as to where that money came from.
I'd like to hear the explanation, thank you.
Yeah, well, that's, again, you don't accept the explanation, and I don't accept, I don't accept your, your entry into this council. Is there anything further, or shall we move on the amended vote? You have something?
Actually, it's not.
On the amended vote? What is it?
No, I can, well, I really, I understand why the counselor put this amendment forward. I agree, looking at the figure of 1847 for this year, as opposed to 1783, it's, it's pretty eyeball-raising if you don't look at, you know, tax levy from year to year. And I think that the thing that most concerns me in this is our valuation changes, single-family and, and open-space land, I guess, both went down, and for me, sitting here as a member of the policy board, I feel like it does behoove us to set a tax rate tonight, I don't like this tax rate, but we need to set a tax rate to be able to get tax bills in in February, and have revenue to run the government. But, as a, as a member of this body, I feel it would be really great for us moving forward if we could spend some more time looking at what we can do from a policy perspective to help preserve value for property owners in the community. I don't know how directly related to that amendment.
Well, one of, one of the ways that we preserve value for the, for the property owners in this community is through our DPW, and what they do, and I don't know about you, Counselor, or you, Counselor, but I do get phone calls from people looking to see when the roads are going to be swept, and when the mowers are coming out to take care of public property in this community. I don't know, I mean, we could certainly stop doing all of that, and look like a lot of other communities, and then I would get more phone calls, you can't have it both ways. I'm sorry, you cannot. And if you're fortunate enough not to get the phone calls, good for you, but I do, and I get them on both sides. You know, people, people understand that you don't get anything for nothing, and if we make decisions up here that are arbitrary, I'm not a part of that, I'm a part of the need, or what I perceive to be the need in the community. And the only way I know what the need is, is through my own experience, and what I get from people who give me feedback. So, you know, again, that's one of the ways that we make an attempt to uplift the, the property values in this community, from our level. We can't go onto people's property and start pruning their trees, that's up to them to do. But in terms of what we can do, we try to do it mostly through our Department of Public Works, and that, when I vote yes for a piece of equipment, it's because of need, because a lot of those pieces of equipment are antiquated and need to be replaced, and it's because the community wants it. How many times have I sat up here, and I've heard Counselor Vandal speak about, "When is this going to be swept? When is this going to be mowed? When is this going to be cleared?" Because he gets phone calls, too. He knows what, and he has, he has, has an idea as to what it takes to make this community's valuation go up. So, you know, without putting words into his mouth, I've heard him repeatedly, for many, many years, ask those questions, and that's where I'm coming from with this. So, again, my question is, if nobody else has anything to add to this, we need to make, take a vote on, or, we've got a, a motion and a second, on an amended version of Agenda Item Number 11. So unless anybody has anything to add to this amended version of Agenda Item Number 11, then I will ask for a roll call to see if we're going to amend Agenda Item Number 11.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
No.
Counselor Nicola?
No.
Counselor Pellicwen?
No.
Counselor Regis?
No.
Counselor Vandal?
No.
Counselor Clements?
No.
Counselor Langivan?
No.
Counselor Markucci?
No.
One yes, eight no?
Thank you. The amendment didn't pass. Back to Agenda Item Number 11. Vote to adopt a single tax rate for all classes of property. The Board of Assessors recommends a yes vote. I had a motion and a second on that. So can I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellicwen?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
No.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Langivan?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Seven yes, two no?
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 12. Vote to amend the appropriations of the FY 2013 budget as follows. Veterans benefits, $35,000. School department unemployment, $30,000. Heating fuel, former Wells Middle School, $20,000. General insurance, $15,000. Total increases to budget, $100,000.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Madam Chair, I realize that there was a question asked in regards to this, and I didn't answer that. One of the things, and it is included within the budget in how we divvy things up, but the accountant, myself, and the treasurer go through the various current line items to see if we are going to run short at the end of the fiscal year. And on veterans' benefits, we've been running high because the need has been high. The school department unemployment, just quite honestly, simply a product of the trends that we're on. And to heat the Wells Middle School, which the school department just transferred over to us. So we anticipate that we will have the shortfall in these various budgets. In order to address it prior to that occurring, we make this amendment to the appropriations.
Thank you. Counselor Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The increase, $15,000 increase, general insurance, does that have anything to do with, I don't know, Wells being vacant now?
Yeah, actually, yes, thank you. Actually, when we had the building, because it's now, it falls from a traditional building to a vacant building coverage, which is much more expensive. We did put in an estimate, and we estimate a little bit low, so this would actually cover the anticipated increased cost in the vacant building coverage.
Madam Chair, I voted against at our last meeting Agenda Item Number 16, and that was vote to approve some, a supplemental appropriation for the school department. And this is my point exactly, because three of these items are directly related to the school department. So in addition to that money that we approved last time, here's another 30, another 20, and another 15. So, but this is on our side of the budget. This is why, and I believe I made a comment at the last meeting, just one more question, I guess, the school department unemployment, who does our follow-ups on the unemployment? Do we appeal? Who handles that?
We have a third-party administrator that advocates on the town's behalf. I'm trying to remember the name, the name's not coming to me. I don't know if the accountant, she's shaking her head, no. We do have a third-party administrator that looks at the claims and will, if we believe a claim is not valid, then we call the third-party administrator to ask them to advocate to not approve the unemployment claim.
Okay, and they attend the hearings on our behalf with all of the information?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Anybody else, anything further? Counselor McDonald?
On the $35,000 for veterans' benefits, what does that go to cover?
Actually, I see the veterans' agent is here, but basically people that are certain veterans come in, the trending analysis that we have, I think we actually increased this because we know the need has been there. And I think we were, we had about 80,000 in the budget, and it looks like we're going to be closer to the 100 and 115. So it's just really, and this one is, it depends on who shows up on our doorstep, what benefits they're eligible for. And so we've had, quite honestly, more people show up on our doorstep, and they've asked for the eligibility of the benefits. And as a process of law, if they submit, if they come to us, ask for us, we're required to provide that. I don't know, Mike, if you want to-
If I meant, well, just to be more specific, I would like to know the specific types of benefits they're funding, like what does it go to fund?
That's, basically, what the increase is, is in Chapter 115, Veterans Benefits, which is budgeted for $90,000 per year. But in the last four months, I've gained probably five new veterans, what we call veterans that are on roll, that actually collect a monthly check from the town of Southbridge, which is reimbursed to the town at 75% a year later. But it's a needs-based program. And if a veteran comes in and falls on, you know, harsh times, and if he is qualified, then the state authorizes us to pay him. And there's been an awful increase. Obviously, the economy's not getting any better, any quicker. So when a veteran falls on bad times, he comes to me, and if he lives in the community and qualifies, then we must pay him based on the state regulation rates.
Okay, but what are we paying them for? That's what I'm trying to find out.
What are the different types of-
Well, basically, we're paying them to keep his head above water. If he can't find, you know, a decent job, if he has no source of income whatsoever and doesn't qualify for unemployment, this is basically a monthly benefit for him to keep his head above water until he can get his feet back on the ground through a job. Or if he's disabled, once he applies for Social Security Disability and he's granted the Social Security Disability, then obviously we back off on our payments. But there again, it's a state-run program that's administered by the town through my office. And if the veteran qualifies, he, his wife, children, anyone in the household, there's a rate-setting rate, and if they qualify, then we must pay them.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Counselor Moriarty?
Just briefly, I have similar thoughts as Counselor Regis in terms of a lot of this additional increase to the budget. And I know last council meeting, I had made a number of comments and suggestions, and similar to what the chair had said during announcements, your announcements, rather. I, and I'm an educator, I support the schools. At the moment, I just, I have a hard time supporting the administration, whether it's school committee-side or otherwise. It has become just, you know, the games that have been played, both politically on the school side, school committee-side, rather, and even within the top tiers of the school administration over the last several years, it's really creating just a, you know, I hate to use the term, but, and perhaps it's exaggerating a bit, but it's really kind of creating a death spiral for that school system. Despite the new school building, which I would love to have the resources they have in my own kind of classroom, that'd be, you know, I'd kill for that sort of setup. But the morale, and, you know, we see that with the school department unemployment in terms of whether it's departures, firings, and otherwise. So this is more or less, I guess, just kind of a broad statement. You know, one of the things I kind of campaigned on, if you will, was, you know, we need to do a better job of supporting the schools. And in this particular case, it's becoming more and more evident as time goes on that sometimes supporting doesn't necessarily mean giving everything. And while we're voting in support of this amendment, because we more or less kind of have our hands tied in doing so.
Well, you know, if I could just interject, and I'm going to let you finish, regarding a couple of these items, the former Wells Middle School belongs to the town of Southbridge. When we handed over the keys to the new middle high school, we gave that to the schools. We took back our building. That's our building. They don't own it, we do. In terms of the general insurance, we need to protect our asset. We need to protect our asset. So on those two items, they come to $35,000, we have to. One thing I'd like to see change, and I don't know if it's possible, is that the school department deal with their own unemployment. If they're generating unemployment, then they should pay for it. And that's maybe not something that can be done. I've never been on the school committee, I don't know enough about the school committee, and it's, the school is a whole different animal when it comes to budgeting and all of that sort of thing. But I feel that if the school department is generating unemployment, lawsuits, any of that stuff, then the school department should be budgeting and paying for it. We have to be in the business of paying for an awful lot of departments on the town side. And I hate to use the term town side, school side, but that's, it is what it is, and I hate saying that, too. And that's my concern, are the departments that we look over and deal with through the manager. So, you know, I would like to see some of this changed myself. I'm in total agreement with that. But in terms of those other two, those two bottom line items, that's our building. But I will say this, I am not going to be supportive of any of our other buildings being handed over to the school department. They have the former high school, they have the brand-new facility, they have space in the DPW facility if they choose to use so, use that. They still have the building at the bottom of West Street, which I think we should take back, because I think they have enough space. I'm not in the, at all interested in turning any other town buildings, town-owned buildings over to the schools. We need them to try to generate revenue so that we can pay the general insurance and the former Wells Middle School and the school department unemployment. So, you know, if that comes to, you know, across your desk, Mr. Clark, at least this Counselor is not in support of the school department getting any more of our buildings. I'm sorry, I took up your thunder, but I wanted to get that in.
Okay. I've lost the rest of my thought on that now, anyway, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Pellicwen?
So there's the $20,000 for the heating fuel costs, that's an annual cost approximately for heating?
We actually estimated how much it would be to heat that building, and we were short. That's not the total cost to heat that building, I don't believe. I think we put a certain amount in the budget, and this is what we believe is additional that would be necessary to carry that building.
So are we, how much are we heating this vacant building? Is it at 68 degrees in there, or, you know, is it just enough to keep the pipes from freezing?
Yeah, just enough to keep the pipes from freezing. We have to make sure we don't get mold in the building. Mold will be very destructive.
So the, and then there's the $15,000 additional for general insurance on that building.
Yeah, when a building fails to be in active use, there's special coverage that's required, and it's called, the term of art, I guess, is vacant building coverage, much higher, much higher rate because there's higher risks because no one's in the building.
Right. I do think that vacant buildings are a really big problem, especially close to downtown. And I was wondering if there are any other associated costs now that we are fiscally responsible for that building, or is just the heating fuel and the insurance the lion's share of it? I mean, costs of, just cost of ownership to the town, government?
Yeah, we're trying to keep those numbers fairly minimal.
Right.
But I think carrying that building, I want to guess, is probably about a quarter of a million dollars. I mean, 250,000, 300,000. It's a lot of money to carry a building like-
Per year?
Per year.
Wow. Thank you.
Counselor Moriarty?
Just one question. As far as the status of the middle school, what is the minimal we could do in terms of changing its status from being quote-unquote vacant?
Yeah, good-
Is there one office we could toss down there just to kind of save us the money? Would it be a net savings at all, or no?
Yeah, no, good question. We have had those discussions with the insurance company, but I think it's a, I'm trying to remember the occupancy, I think it was like 50, over 50% of the building has to be actually Which we did, we did try to competitively market that building. I will be putting together a plan to try to move things, just from an administration standpoint. If the schools were to give us the high school and the middle school, that would have even compounded it. So I at least do appreciate the efforts of the school department to keep the high school and to have that continue to be within their budget. So they are trying to make use of that, or else we would have had 200,000 square feet worth of facilities that we need to market.
Counselor Vandal?
To the town manager, if somebody came in off the street and wanted to know what the price on the Wells School was, what is the price on that school? What's the bottom line that you would let that school go for?
Well, number one, it's not what I would let it go for. I have to follow certain guidelines. We did have it appraised. Off the top of my head, I think it was about 3 million. I did approach the council previously on other concepts to have those numbers be less to try to draw some interest, because we marketed it and nobody showed up, which tells me that we're not, we don't have it priced right for the market that exists at this point. But I will be coming back to council, actually, I had a discussion already with the chair about trying to put additional discounts on to try to get some interest in some of these buildings. We've got to move them. They're just, they're an albatross.
And the other buildings that we had to seal, the nursery on Massey Street, do we have any takers on that?
No.
So we haven't sold anything? What, Pleasant Street, no?
Well, I shouldn't say we haven't sold anything, because that sounds really pathetic. And it's a pathetic market, and it is tough.
It's picking up.
The only, the only thing that we did, and actually, last time out, we had a bidder for the one on Pleasant Street, not the DPW garage, but the other one, 114 Pleasant Street.
Right.
We did market the 10 acres, I think it was 10 acres, on Commercial Drive, and we did sell four acres of that 10. So we have sold something in the last year, which for me is, I mean, it's tremendously frustrating. I mean, it really is.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything further? Shall we move on the vote? Who's missing? Okay. We're going to vote on this one.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellicwen?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Langivan?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. 14. Vote to raise and appropriate $100,000 to the stabilization fund to cover anticipated additional costs in the snow and ice budget for FY 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Moriarty?
Just as a clarification, obviously, I know the way that the snow and ice and deficit spending and all that sort of thing come up, and how this account works. But last year, we had such a mild winter, we still, if I recall, it was the same figure, the 100,000, and that was more or less to kind of help patch over from the extremely heavy winter the year before. And we were more or less bringing everything kind of up the stock.
Well, what we do on snow and ice is, in order to be compliant with the law, once you set a minimum, you have to live with that minimum forever. So that minimum is 200,000. We know, actually, in the last three to four years, in the time that I've been here, that snow and ice, I think last year was the lowest, and it was about 275,000 to as high as 675,000, I think the year before. So it ranges. What we do is we try to put some money aside. I think with this 100,000, we already did 100,000 previously, so I think we anticipated about having 400,000 to cover snow and ice activities during this winter in the hopes that hopefully it's a mild one again. But last year, to your point, we did have an element in the contract, we did have a snowstorm early in the year, but then we ran into an issue where we were contractually obligated to buy a certain amount of sand and salt. So we basically paid about 275, that 75,000, or somewhere in that neighborhood, was used to replenish the stock of sand and salt, which is really usable for this year.
Right. So more or less, my point is, we should be in pretty good shape, all things, you know, normal weather conditions anyways.
I was going to say, God willing, he doesn't have a lot of snow.
Obviously, there's a huge variety of possibilities, but we should be fairly well set in a normal winter because of what we were able to stockpile, if you will, last year. So, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? No? We have a roll call.
Counselor Regis?[1707.28]
Yes.
Counsel Vandell?
Yes.
Counsel Clements?
Yes.
Counsel Landjevan?
Yes.
Counsel Markucci?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel Moriarty?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Pellican?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. 15, vote to appropriate $700,000 from certified free cash to the stabilization fund. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counsel Regis.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Knew that one would put a smile on your face.
That's all.
Okay. Do we have a roll call, please?
Counsel Vandell?
Yes.
Counsel Clements?
Yes.
Counsel Landjevan?
Yes.
Counsel Markucci?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel Moriarty?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Pellican?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. 16, vote to appro, oh, my favorite. Okay. Vote to approve proposed amendments to Bylaw Chapter 6, Section 6-100, licenses and licensing regulations for the town of Southbridge for secondhand junk, precious metals, and old metals regulations. And before I read this fairly lengthy piece of bylaw, I'm going to let the manager speak first.
I appreciate the opportunity to just provide a little bit of overview. Counsel Pellican raised a very good point, that according to our bylaws, we do have a requirement that this be advertised in the paper for 10 days, I believe, prior to the final vote. In the last clause of that, it says that failure of the council to do so will basically have no ramifications. Now, the way that has been interpreted in the time that I've been here, and even well before that, I asked the town clerk, I said, why do we have this bylaw and it basically not be used? And I think that the reason why that advertising element has not been used is because that last clause that says there's no ramifications for not doing it. So perhaps previously, putting these bylaws in full in the paper is an expensive proposition. And perhaps previous administrations and the town clerk, I don't, I'm trying to think of how long Matty's been here, the town clerk, I think seven or eight years.
At least.
So in that seven and eight-year time sequence, she has never used that section. So even though that language exists, it hasn't been used as a process of law. I did ask the town attorney to weigh in on that, and basically, he came back and said that yes, you can vote tonight, because it has not been used as a process of law. But, to your point, the language is there, and why aren't we following it? So he asked to have that referred to the bylaw review committee, and have them weigh in on, you know, a kind of an interesting legislative history, that the bylaw says you'll do something, but then it also gives you an out clause, and the town has effectively used that out clause for the last eight years. So I believe for tonight that the final reading of this is in order, and I do have a letter to that effect from the town attorney that I will put in the packages for the members of the council, but I believe that's a fair description of what he submitted.
Okay. Where do I start from here and go to where?
Just that section.
This section. There? So the whole thing, basically?
Basically.
Okay. Here we go. Permanent record to be kept. The accounts required, requires to be kept hereunder shall be kept in a permanently-bound, non-loose leaf book written in legible ink, which book shall be kept for at least two hours from the time of the last entry therein. Entries shall be made 24 hours of the event giving rise to such entry. A. Jewelry, diamonds, precious or semi-precious stones or gems, precious or semi-precious metals, watches and figurines, shall be photographed or photocopied in reasonable detail. Said photograph shall accurately and clearly represent the article. B. With respect to secondhand articles, one clear copy of each transaction record and photograph, if applicable, shall be electronically delivered to the Southbridge Police Department no later than 12 noon the following business day. C. All transaction records shall be opened to inspection by the chief of police, or any officer or person duly authorized by the chief, or any other person authorized under law. I don't need to read this back?
No.
Cool. Okay. Section 6-102-6, holding period before sale. A. No secondhand article shall be sold, encumbered by sales contract, or otherwise disposed of or altered in its appearance within 30 days of purchase unless the dealer has granted permission in writing from the chief of police or his designee by any case, but in any case, not within 48 hours from the time of purchase. With respect to any secondhand article for which permission is granted by the chief of police pursuant to this sub-paragraph, the person buying or otherwise receiving said article shall complete a transaction record upon a form approved by the town manager, which provides the information required pursuant to Section 6-102.2B above, as applicable to a person buying or receiving a secondhand article. B. All items purchased shall remain on the premises during the waiting period. Items shall not be placed on the sales floor until the waiting period has expired unless the item is clearly marked with the corresponding transaction number and the sales release date based on the timeframe as specified in Sub-paragraph A above. C. The following are exempt from the holding period required of this section. Auction purchases, estate purchases from an executor or administrator, where the purchase is accompanied by written proof of said position. Section 6-102.7, notification to police regarding possible stolen property. Secondhand articles, junk, and old metal dealers shall immediately notify the Southbridge Police Department upon receiving an article which is questionable as to its status of being stolen or not, and shall make such article available for identification by an officer of the police department. Section 6-102.8, receipt of articles from a minor. No secondhand junk or old metal dealer, or any employee or agent of such a dealer, shall directly or indirectly purchase or receive by way of barter or exchange any secondhand articles, junk, or old metals from a minor. Section 6-102.9, examination and removal of articles. A. Any shop described or governed by Chapters 6 through 100, and in all secondhand goods, old metals, and/or junk therein, may at all times be examined by a person authorized in writing by the chief of police to make such examination. B. If the Southbridge Police Department determines that a secondhand good, old metal, or junk article is needed for evidence in a criminal investigation, a Southbridge police officer may seize that evidence, subject to applicable criminal procedures, if any. The secondhand dealer, old metal dealer, or junk dealer shall be issued a receipt for the article. C. The Southbridge Police Department may keep seized articles, subject to the court's direction, if any, as long as necessary to permit the article to be used as evidence, and for such reasonable time thereafter as needed to best determine, if possible, the persons lawfully entitled to said property. Section 6-102.10, enforcement and penalties. The provisions of this section may be enforced by any police officer of the town of Southbridge by any means available, including but not limited to disposition pursuant to mass general law, Chapter 40, Sections 21 and 21D. Each day a violation continues shall be a separate violation or offense, subject to another fine. This enforcement of this bylaw by non-criminal disposition, as described herein, shall be added to the list of bylaws so enforced and designated in these bylaws. A. First offense within a 24-month period, $50. B. Second offense within a 24-month period, $100. C. Third and subsequent offenses within a 24-month period, $300. If any provision of this article is held invalid by any court or body of competent jurisdiction, it shall not affect the validity or application of the remainder of the article. And that's it. And that's the third and final reading. Could I have a motion, please? Second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this bylaw? Could I have a roll call, please?
Counsel Clements?
Yes.
Counsel Landjevan?
Yes.
Counsel Markucci?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel Moriarty?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Pellican?
No.
Counsel Regis?
Yes.
Counsel Vandell?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no?
Okay, thank you. 17 is counselor's forum. Counsel Landjevan?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Regis?
Nothing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Markucci?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a few things. I was late this evening, and I don't know if the council's aware that an EHS subcommittee meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, December 10th. And just for the council to know, there's a few more warrants from the high school that need to be addressed, and I also...
Counselor, that's December 11th.
It's December 11th, Tuesday?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay, December 11th.
Just in case that mattered.
Yeah, it does, very much so. Thank you. And at the request of Counselor Moriarty, we're also going to discuss the direction that we want to go as a council with a liaison for the, between the town of Southbridge and the school department. Secondly, I had requested this week in my packet to have the, to be made aware of whether our department heads have contracts with the town. I was a little surprised to find out that the only two department heads, if you will, that have contracts are Chief DeFranzo and our town accountant, Karen Hanoys. And the reason why I was referencing that, and out of curiosity, dates back to an article that was in the Worcester Telegram, November 18th, and it spoke about our request for the Southbridge, for the police audit, and that the state declined, and, you know, that's something now that the town manager is addressing, and we're going to move forward. My question through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Clark, and Mr. Clark, if this is accurate or not, and this is the reason why, I guess I kind of went backwards on this, the reason why I requested this. The end article of the Worcester Telegram says the chief said the council's request for an audit was unnecessary, and said he is carrying out the objectives of the town manager, whose evaluation process for department head, department heads yields bonus points for administrators who return money to the town. So I, my question is, if this is accurate, what are bonus points? And are we engaged in that?
Yeah, no, no, good question. And actually, it was a, just a, there's actually three people that have contracts, myself, the accountant, and the fire chief. You referenced two, so I do obviously have an employment contract, and by law, the accountant and myself are the two by law that are eligible. In terms of the bonus points, I was requested, actually, I think the first year I was here, to put into place a performance evaluation tool. Obviously, the council did one for myself, and by bylaw, we already have one in, well, we have the provision in bylaw, or personnel rules, that we can have a performance evaluation for our employees. And we have not used that, and this is an effort, and I believe I did distribute the tool that I had put out, that this is really an evaluation for the non-union employees, that they will be, I hate to say graded for, but evaluated, to see whether they're performing well or not. And I'm trying to go from memory, I think it's a 100-point scale, that for basic skills and ability, for tendance, for different elements, you can get up to 100 points. And there are, I think it's two extra points, bonus points, and one of it is, for this, that if you are a department head that doesn't attempt to spend every single dime they have and turn money back, that that is, you are given some credit and some incentive for doing that. Also, I think in that same language, that if it's a department head that goes out and looks for grants and obtains grants, it's an encouragement for the department heads to do. This is a model that I used when I was the personnel director in a previous town, and I found that it had great results, even though it was fairly modest in terms of, oh, this is points. It's not going to translate into additional money, but it certainly gives the employees that work for this administration the sense that we want you to be responsible stewards, and if you have the ability to turn back money, you're not going to be punished for it.
What defines, what's the definition of the points, though, Mr. Clark? 100 points, what does that get you, if you will, as a department head? I got 100 points, but what do I do with it?
It's, it's, when we, when we issue and pay people, there's supposed to be a merit pay, merit pay system. So in the budget this year, we had a 1%. The 1% pay increase, it's really a COLA slash merit, that what I would need to do, and will do, is set a target that for individuals that receive, and I haven't done this yet, but that receives 70 or lower, may not get that 1%. Individuals that receive 70 or higher would be eligible for their COLA. In the other town that I worked, and this was several years ago, I actually had the ability to have a little bit of a range, so if somebody got a 90 to 102, then they got a slightly higher percentage increase. Here, how do you divvy up 1%? I mean, to be honest, we're kind of in lean times. So what I would probably do is to set a floor. The interesting thing about setting the floor, when I did this in my previous employ, I had two people that went below that number, and within a year, they got the message that they should move on, and they both did. So sometimes giving people an honest assessment of their skills and ability that they bring to the organization is a fairly powerful tool. And even though, you know, well, everyone wants to do well, you know, when people are in school or in life, you want to get close to that 100%. So it's really just the scoring system that's used in the evaluation. And I have not yet set the floor number, so I don't want to let department heads think that 70 or low, you know, 69 or lower, you're in trouble. But I will give some thought to how that works. But that's what that article was referring to, was the performance evaluation process for non-union employees.
For non-union employees.
Yes. And for union, if I may anticipate the question, some of it has to be collectively bargained. So the idea is to roll this out, use this for a year or two, and then as negotiations come up, approach those with the various unions as their contracts come due. In my past experience, unions have been resistant to a tool such as that. Certainly, management can ask, but as part of the process, it does have to be negotiated, I believe.
At your convenience, Mr. Clark, if I could just have a number of what we've awarded department heads on this bonus point?
Well...
Because there's a number attached to that, correct?
Well, what they would, it, I believe it is only 1% or 2%. So the maximum, if someone was an outstanding employee, showed up all the time, was never sick, turned back money or found grants, they would receive 102. I think what you would see is, if I set a target, again, because we have 1% cost of living slash merit, that anybody that receives 75 or 70 points and above would get that 1%. If someone were to get, as an example, 68, and then got the bonus points, they would be at 70. So I'm happy to show and walk through the tool with you, to see how I've used it in the past experience. And I think, there's probably no reason why we couldn't show what people got for scores. We are scoring them based upon anniversary dates, so it is, it is rolling, depending upon when people start, so we won't have a full accumulation until after a year.
Sure. Thank you. And one last thing, and it was brought up at our last council meeting, and thank you for the information. Mr. Clark, this is referencing the town of Charlton use of, I've read this document probably about six times, and every time I read it, I have a different interpretation.
Okay.
And, I don't know, it goes back to minutes when myself and Counselor Nicola, former town manager, Carla, were at a meeting in Charlton, and, you know, nothing...
Nothing came of it.
Nothing came of it, exactly. And just reading, you know, parts of this, it's, the, it seems everything was requested, but nothing was ever...
Consummated.
Right.
Exactly.
That's exactly correct.
So I don't, I don't know how you feel about this, now that you've read it, or, you know, do we get an opinion from our town attorney? You know, just telling us, listen, you have the right to say no to Casella, and it's to say no to Casella, and it's that simple. I, I need something in, in black and white. Like I said, the more I read this, the more I think we have the authority to tell Casella no.
Well, maybe you're, the way I interpret it, and I certainly, that's an excellent point, I, I can send it to an attorney to have an attorney interpret, interpret it. The, the way I interpret what happened was in 1993, the town and Charlton agreed to special legislation that said that Charlton can use the, the Southbridge landfill as long as there's a mutually agreeable resolution and agreement reached. That agreement was attempted, I don't want to say several times, it was attempted in 1993, 1994, and then it resurfaced again in 2007.
Right.
In 2007, I, I did read the minutes. Yourself and, and the chairwoman were at the meeting. At that meeting, Attorney Giorgio, representing the town of Southbridge, and actually, I, I did have a typo in there. It was actually Attorney Giorgio recommended to, to Southbridge Town Council that if you want to honor that, honor the intent of that, then he recommended putting in this Exhibit J into the landfill extension agreement. And in Exhibit J, he basically says, if Casella can work it out, then Casella can work it out, but it's between Casella and Charlton. Now, the way I interpret that, and you folks kind of lived through that, and it was a long document, that there appeared to be some, we want to wash our hands of this issue and just leave it to Casella to resolve. That's the way I read the, the legislative history of that in that Article J, Exhibit J, which I think with so many, so many different things going on, I guess I can understand that. But I will share that, you know, my, my write-up with the attorney that we have working with us on the extension agreement, and just make sure that he is in agreement with, with my interpretation. And if he's not, then, and he and I don't always necessarily see eye to eye on, on things. But I, I will do that. I'm happy to do that.
Thank you very much.
Because I, I do my best to try to get you guys information and read it and decipher. I didn't live that stuff, so I, I don't know what the true intent was.
You're a very lucky man, believe me.
No, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Okay. Counselor Pellequin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In regards to Section 101-7 of our bylaws regarding the publication of general bylaws, I believe that the Bylaw Review Committee already went over this chapter sometime this spring of our bylaws. It's right in the beginning of the document. I actually was at the meeting where they covered Chapter 1, and they didn't make any substantive recommendations to change that bylaw. So I don't know if they have any more information to add to that. But I believe that most of what they're doing is they're, they're just sort of reading through and noting any, like, minor changes that need to happen. If there's any really big substantive policy, policy issues that are coming up, I believe when they come through us, not the Bylaw Review Committee. I know it seems weird that I'm really hung up on this one bylaw. I'm really a, a big fan of this bylaw. Last year, before I was a counselor, I really wanted to get a copy of the bylaw incorporating the Economic Development Commission because I had concerns about the Industrial Development Financing Authority. And I went in to speak with the staff, and the individual I spoke to didn't want to give me a copy of the draft bylaw because it hadn't been approved by the council yet. And the only way I was able to read what happened here was by showing them the bylaw that says it's supposed to be posted. And I understand that posting it in the newspaper might be expensive, potentially. I'm, I don't know what the newspaper rates are like. But it, it also says that you can post it with the town clerk's office, on the bulletin board, and, and on the website. And I don't believe these would be really expensive to do. And I just, I feel like, like, one of my priorities being up here is I, I really want everything that we do to be as transparent as possible. And I want everybody in the public to be able to have as, as much of a handle on what we're doing as possible. And so it's, it's kind of disappointing to me that this bylaw has been passed despite no, no sort of public distribution of the information, aside from people who happen to watch our meetings. And, and on a related note, our executive session minutes, what's happening?
I was just going to say, I'm embarrassed to say not yet. I, I will get you a, a date to, to actually, when they will be out. Because now, I'm, I'm frustrated myself that we haven't got them out. Even if we do them piecemeal, just to start getting something out, it's been a time, some time.
I do have a suggestion on that front. I'd heard from an elected official in Worcester that the executive session minutes don't necessarily have to be voted to be released by the full body. It could be done under the discretion of the Chair of the council, which would obviously be a lot more efficient than having all nine of us in a room together for each individual item.
Yeah, I believe that the council and executive session voted to release those. So it's not a question of release. It's the question of having to go in where redaction is necessary, that the documents need to be redacted and distributed.
We released them.
It's on, it's on that piece that, that we're.
Okay.
We don't have them out yet because we haven't redacted everything. And that's just, it, it's administratively, it takes a little bit.
One, one more tangential thing. I noticed in the, in the request from Counselor Markucci, it included a large number of DTW Subcommittee Minutes. And I noticed before the election in June, I wasn't a member of this committee yet, but there was an executive session meeting at the Subcommittee level on June 6th, 2012. And I know that we discussed when we were talking about whether or not to release executive session minutes. I had brought up the topic of Subcommittee Minutes because I had gone to a PPP meeting, meeting, I believe, in July that had an executive session component to it. And if there was one just previously the month prior, it concerns me that there's, I don't know how many of these there are, but I don't know why.
That's, that's, doesn't even sound right. I think I've had, in, in eight years on this council, I think I've had, I've been to one Subcommittee where we actually had an executive session, and it was this summer. So I don't think we had two in one year. It may say that, but I don't recall it.
So perhaps the minutes are incorrect, then?
Possibly.
Well, just, and I think, and I don't remember the exact, I don't remember the date, but sometimes when we have a collective bargaining agreement, it will be brought to Subcommittee. The components of that will be outlined to the members of the Subcommittee. And then it'll be brought to the full council, and the full council will, will vote on it. Both items are exactly the same, the same item in terms of the same material. And I think what we, what was decided is that we will release the one from the, the council overall because that's really the one that is of substance relevant to the approval, in this case, of a collective bargaining agreement. Because if it was a DPW or any other Subcommittee, it would just be a recommendation to the full council. So that is going to be released as part of the overall package.
So, so the meeting minutes of, of this Subcommittee and the meeting minutes of the, the full council executive session would be identical, then? There's, there's no differences?
In terms of content, you know, the, what was, what was the reason for the executive session in, in negotiation process is that negotiations have been reached, and then there's a discussion at Subcommittee, and then it goes to the full council for consideration. And if the full council votes to, to do it, it's not going to, the, the agreement that we reached with an independent, that we reached with the union isn't going to change between Subcommittee and full council. It's like the material here. What you see in Subcommittee is generally what comes on to the council package. So my point is, the information is getting out, but just through the council. I will look to see if we actually hold the executive session minutes from those.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Vandal?
On the two roll-off boxes that we have on Gov'wood Road, we're going to keep them going year-round. Am I correct?
No.
No?
Because of snow and ice, they're a, a significant maintenance headache. And I believe even previously, we kept those seasonal. So we are doing it seasonally.
It's right, it's right near the town bond. We got all kinds of equipment. You know, it's just a matter of passing, getting the snow out in the front and pulling them in. The trucks, you know, do all the work. You don't need to shovel them out, is what I'm saying. Is, because it's a great, it's, it's good for the people. You know, I've gotten a few calls saying, last year it was closed, and they wanted to use it, and they couldn't. And then, I didn't even know it was closed, being Chairman of DPW. Nobody notified me. So I said, this next year, which is now, I was going to see if we can't get it to stay open. I mean, if it's snowing, if it's got a real bad storm, nobody's going to go out anyway, so I don't expect them to do it for a sting. But after all, the snow gets, you know, the snow removal's done in the town, they could, you know, make a sweep so that people do have the opportunity to throw their leaves and bran. Not many are going to do it now because it's wintertime, but give them the opportunity on that one. Number two, where are we, where are we in reference to the police contract? How are we making out down there?
Negotiations are ongoing.
Ongoing?
Still, still talking.
Too much ongoing for me because, you know, we talked about this. I think it was three months back, you know. Thank you on that one. The fence at the AO, what's the status quo on that?
On the, on the fence on the AO, we did have a meeting with the, the owner of the AO, and they have agreed to, their idea, not ours, and it is private property, take some of the fence down that's closer to the rotary where it's not as necessary, it's not a public safety need for people. You know, there's enough slope so you won't fall right into the river. And their idea is to move it from there down to the, the sections up closer to the gas station and, and the other end where it has the, the hodgepodge of, of coverage.
That's all fine and well, but in the meantime, they've got to maintain that plastic fence because it's, it's down in two of the, two of the areas.
We, we have a letter in to them, and they've came out and said that they're going to do it. So they're aware that the liability is on them.
They're going to do it, they're going to fix it with other, other parts. But the thing is, is they've got to maintain the plastic that's there now. That's, and where are we, where are we on the Woodstock Road project? At the bottom of the Woodstock Road? Where does that stand?
It's ongoing.
I know it's ongoing.
I, I anticipate it will be done in the spring to summer of next year.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a couple of things, some observations. I was kind of surprised at the auditor's response because when we were looking into this, I had called the auditor's office and asked, explained what the situation was, talked to an individual there. And they told me that, yes, it would be appropriate for their office to come in. In fact, they've, they've done it previously. And when I saw the thing of criminal activity, that's not something for the auditor to do, that's the Attorney General. But so anyway, nevertheless, but I would still say that Counselor Moriarty's motion that night and the way we voted it, addressed it because we said we would bring in an outside consultant to take care of it, and I'm satisfied with that. That in terms of the police accreditation, I'm a very big proponent of accreditation for any institution and what it brings. I don't look at it as being in place of this audit because an accreditation will take normally about three years to be able to achieve by the time we go through it. But it will do everything that it needs to do to alleviate any of the situations we've, we've, that have been alleged. So I think that's a good move to do. In terms of what Counselor Markucci was talking about relative to the Casella contract, I share the same concerns. I was concerned about some of the things I read in the paper about whether or not we can interfere with Casella's business operations. If they interfere or go in contrast to what we have, or contradictory to the contract we have, we should be enforcing it. That's a matter of public safety and health and, to some degree. And if it affects Southbridge, then we should look at Southbridge's best interests. In terms of the, I, I didn't know this until Counselor Markucci brought it up about the comments relative to the performance in turning money back. My question would be, I don't, well, let me make it with a statement. That's a policy issue. How we do things and how the town addresses employees is, is a policy issue. I don't recall this council ever voting any such policy or giving any kind of direction that we would say, well, if our department heads return money, then, you know, we'll, we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll reward them in some sense. A budget, to me, is pretty straightforward. You've got to develop it, you have to develop a budget to support your main mission. And really, if it's done properly and appropriately and, and basically on the forecasts and assessment, it should be right on target, you know? And if you're short in some area, then you did something wrong. And if you're over in some area, then you didn't reflect your, your accurate needs. So I, I would be curious as to when this came before the council because I don't believe it did, and when it would, before it would be implemented. We shouldn't be reading about it in the paper as already been enacted when it hasn't even come before us.
Madam, Madam Chair, just on, on that point, it's, it's my interpretation, and I may stand to be corrected, but personnel matters are left to the town manager. And this is a personnel evaluation, which I thought was left to the manager.
To the contrary, it says specifically, even to the point of job descriptions in the charter, that those things will be brought to the council. The manager shall bring them to the council, and the council shall vote and determine the policy. And it also says that we will vote and approve the, the job descriptions. And we talked about this in Subcommittee, and I remember the comment being made that, well, if we took every single thing before the council, we wouldn't get it done. But it doesn't matter because we have a charter that was voted by the people that say we do that. So I mean, I appreciate the manager's position on that, but the charter, I think, is, is pretty clear.
And just in my own defense, Madam Chair, and I, I'll shut up, but I, I did submit the performance evaluation document, I believe, to the council for their input. And there was no input received, so I kind of did continue to proceed, so. It wasn't, it wasn't an attempt to deceive, I guess, is my point.
I wasn't trying to delude it was. I was just caught talking about the council's oversight. Because to me, I'm seeing some things that, that's not happening, that's not coming to the council. The other thing, when we talk in terms of grants and budgets, most budgets, most grant applications I've ever put in for say they can't be used to supplant something that is actually, that could be budgeted. They're, they're there to kind of take care of the things you can't. So I would just look from that standpoint. The, then I have, this is a question I have, my last point. And during the Chair's announcements, you made several comments about meeting room names changed. Who made those decisions?
The manager, again. Part of the reason why I sent this out, under the charter, I believe the manager is responsible for all the property assets of the community.
For the management and the upkeep and the well-being. But if anybody recalls, I believe if you go back and you look through historical records, you will find that it was a vote of this council that named that room, the Hyman Room. That's a ceremonial aspect that typically falls to the legislative body to make that decision. So we took a, a member of the town council in a room that was named after that and now moved it to the basement. That's something that this council should have voted on. And I, and if, if I had had my opportunity to speak up on it, I would say no. I mean, we, everybody, it's, it's great. I think it was right that these rooms were named after public servants, people who gave of themselves. But I don't think it's right, then, to just move it because we decide we're going to move things around. That's something that is, that is, should have been brought to this council. Because to me now, you know, if, if a member of the Hyman family was around, I mean, I don't think there's any of them left in this area, I'd be highly offended to find out that I was moved, that, that my family member was moved to the basement. That these things, there is so much abdication of the authority of this council going to people who, that's just not how it's designed to do, and.
You know what? You're probably right. I'm going to have every one of these moves placed on the agenda for a council vote because I disagree with you on, on the point of, of how, I don't care what other people are thinking, okay? It's what, what's going on here and the nine members of the council. So I will have it placed on the agenda, and every one of those will be subject to a vote to change them if, if it, if it's applicable, and it really is applicable. Because if he has no members of his family here, then I, I guess he was only kind of a transient member of our community? Am I correct, Counselor?
It doesn't matter, as far as I'm concerned.
So I'm going to, I'm going to put them all on, on to have them on an agenda for the council to vote on for changing for all of the names. In terms of who's in what room, that's the, that's the manager's purview. And I, and we're going to leave it there.
I would say yes. What the room, what, what a room is used for, but not, not the change of it, and not to assign. That is the responsibility that belongs to the council.
And we will, it will be on the agenda for name, for room changes.
Yeah.
Okay?
And in terms of, just because somebody else is not around doesn't mean it should just go away.
As your opinion, of course.
Yeah, it is.
Right.
Yes. Because I believe in, what I think, we should do the right thing on things.
Yes, and so do I, Counselor. So do I, as, as I've attested many times in my years of service on this council. So do I, as, as I've attested many times in my years of service on this Council. Is there anything else?
No, that's all I have, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Moriarty?
I have a couple, a couple of things, one, a couple of them are quick questions. One is more or less just clarification, we've got, and Sandy Ackley's no longer here, to kind of just confirm for me, but I assume it's either just a contingency or a typo, we've got on the monthly meeting calendar, the master plan forum in the Council Chambers on both the 12th and 17th, according to the calendar, but in the packets, in the advertising on their flyers and stuff, it only lists the 12th. Do we have two forum dates, or is that a rain date of sorts?
The 17th is Town Council meeting up here.
Correct, which is one of the reasons I was asking.
Yeah, that might be, she might have initially had it on and saw that we had a Council meeting set, scheduled, but I can look into that for you.
I just wanted to confirm, so that anybody who's planning on coming, perhaps to one, not the other-
Right.
Can, can make the necessary arrangements. Another quick question, hopefully quick, the last Council meeting, we, we learned about the WR, WRTA coming into town, as far as a regular bus route, starting January 1st. One question that I hadn't thought of at the time, but have thought of since, where, do we know where residents will be able to access that, that bus line?
Yeah, good, good question, I asked the same question. The answer's gonna be that they, they anticipate two stop locations, one approximately around the library, the other over at the, the campus of the Quinn-Sigumon Community College Optical Drive, but they said that they have a, I think it was their term, a wave-down policy, that if a bus is going by, and you wave the bus down, that they, the policy is to stop and pick you up.
Or flag the bus.
So the route that they'll take is by Optical Drive, Mechanic, to Main, then out Central, so anyone along that stretch could actually wave the bus down and go. So they, they didn't have necessarily dedicated spots, although I think they will, but you still have that wave-down, and I'm probably butchering the term, but wave-down-
More as flagging, like you would a taxi in the city.
Right.
Along that same thought process, whether it's, it's through WRTA, through Southbridge, whomever, will there be, or what kind of signage, you know, a lot of times with bus stops, you have an actual, I'm trying to think of the term for it, but-
Bus shelter.
Yeah, a bus shelter. Will we have any of those? If so, is that Southbridge's dime, WRTA's dime?
WRTA's dime, on the Optical Drive, that's private property, so I don't know where they would situate it, and in our conversation with them, I thought that if people could be in the library, the library may make some sense, it's also on Main Street, so it's, it's kind of a logical spot. So we made the suggestion to them of, of somewhere on Main Street by the library, so if it is inclement weather, people may be able to go in the library and, and use it as a, as a shelter while they wait for the bus. Also, they have a, an electronic sign that they wanna put up to say when the bus will be at the various stops.
Three minutes, kinda thing?
Right.
Okay.
So they need a location for that.
Right. It, it, I would, you know, obviously, everything costs money, I would prefer, if we, if possible, to see an actual bus shelter, rather than relegating the library lobby, for a number of reasons, whether it's the library's hours, but also just, we, I think we want to encourage people to use it, rather than, you know, happening to know that, that's where they should hang out and wait.
I do believe that that's their intent, to put the, to put the shelters up.
And then, similar, just one thing that came up earlier, similar to what the Chair had, had mentioned, as far as Mrs. Ortiz and her issues, I, I think it would be great if we could all kind of get an update as to what the issue is with that, what we find out. And lastly, two things that, two things that kind of relate to the, to the audit. One, with the accreditation program, I agree with, with some of the comments earlier, that I, I think that's a great idea. Along those lines, obviously, this one is for the Massachusetts Police Accreditation, but if we could find, especially for a similar cost, really, it becomes a $650 expense, when you factor in the, the insurance reimbursement, but if we could find something with similar costs for other departments, including particularly the Fire Department, I think that would be great, just a, a better way to, to better look around and, and see where we have efficiencies and inefficiencies. Secondly, similar to what one or two others had, had mentioned in regard to the audit, is, is, in, in reading the, the memorandum, as far as the police audit follow-up, bullets two and three, you know, I don't know if I, if I took them the wrong way, or, or what have you, but it, I'm trying to, to word it politely, but more or less, it seems like it's more of a, an attempt to kind of go around what was already voted on by the Council, as far as soliciting an RFP. I would have thought that as soon as we had the State Auditor come back saying they feel it's not part of their, their jurisdiction, that the town would be drafting the RFP to solicit, rather than whether it's just spitballing, or whatever, talking to, to different firms, especially particular firms, which, you know, I, I don't feel that it, it's an attempt to kind of cherry pick who we use, or anything like that, but one could try to construe it in that manner. So my comment would more or less be, you know, September 24th, the Council voted, a majority, majority of the Council voted for a motion, and, and part of that motion was that if the State Auditor's Office opted that this, the, the request was not really part of their deal, that we would be submitting an RFP for that, and more, just kind of wanted to see that fall through, because that's what we voted on.
Yeah, just, Madam Chair, to, to the point, it certainly was not an attempt to, to not follow what was the intent of the Council, the, the intent of that was merely to, I cannot take an action, there was no appropriation that was made with that motion, and I certainly cannot engage in a contract without an appropriation, so what that was, was basically an attempt to say, this is the ballpark of how much I need. I don't do those type of things, I don't know how much it is, so I, I can't go and, I don't believe it's due diligence of my part to come to the Council and say, well, I need $200,000, if it's only 45. So the intent of me talking to people was strictly to get a, a budget number, so I could then proceed to go ahead, also, under the procurement law, anything over 25,000, I need to do a, a formal process, anything under, I can do an informal process. So it was more just a question of timing, and also an alert to the Council that there is gonna be an appropriation request, and I, I would ask that if this could go on PPP, so people would, you know, be able to weigh in, PPP would be able to weigh in, what I was kinda looking for is scope of services, what do people want, you know, do you wanna spend the 35,000, or the 40, or the, you know, the, which range do you wanna, you know, spend the money? So it wasn't an attempt to be, it was just more, I can't do things unless I have a valid appropriation with which to act upon.
And, again, I, I understand that, I was, that's why I was trying to choose words carefully, and I couldn't come up with quite the right phrase, I didn't wanna try to suggest that you are cherry picking, or necessarily trying to circumnavigate what was decided, but it just kind of struck me a little odd, and, and you've more or less answered my next question, which was what the intent was at this point, going forward, and if it's going through Subcommittee, then so be it, as far as the appropriation portion. And I think that's it, thank you.
Counselor Plamons?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question, and I'm not sure if the Town Manager has an answer, it was brought up to me recently on recycling. We do a good job right now at trying to enforce our recycling regulations, and making everybody comply, three families and under, and unfortunately, a year or so ago, as I recall, we wanted to attempt to have haulers perhaps have to put containers with their other containers at multi-families or larger development-type places, and that did not happen. I was approached by a citizen who asked how they could get rid of their recycling, because they live in a, in a development area where they, there are no recycling containers, and they're avid recyclers, and currently, they, well, they bring it to another location in which they have another property, because there's recycling at that, at that facility, at that home out of our, out of our town. So if indeed Saturdays are open at the landfill, that will be a, for Southbridge and Charlton residents, will that, is that, and will that be then the only alternative to people, other people in this town who are mindful and conservative, and trying to do their part for the environment in recycling? Or is there some other opportunity that I'm not aware of, for them getting rid of their recyclables at this point?
I, I may have the, the number wrong, I, I believe that is, five units or larger are considered to be private enterprise, and, and we do not pick those up, that, that person is required to, the, the property owner is required to contract for whatever service they want, anything under that, they are eligible for the, the curbside pickup.
Right, that's trash. I'm asking you, where can the people who live in larger communities, say a TAG, or, or a Autumn Ridge, or, you know, places where there are people who are mindful, who are recycling, what are they to do with their recyclables, if we're not, as a town, going to make those types of properties comply the way that everybody else is? And they wanna drop off, is the only alternative going to be the Saturday potential that's opening, or do you know, is there something currently that they can do?
Yeah, I'll have, I, I believe that we are differentiating between residential, so if someone had like a bulk pickup that they wanted to get rid of, or, you know, sooner, they could go up there and do that on a Saturday, so, but if it's a business, I don't know if TAG is individual apartments that's owned by one, or whether they're individual units, I'd have to look at the, the elements of it.
And it, it's real simple, though, we have people live in our community that happen to live in different places, you know, whether it's an Autumn Ridge, or, or Redstone, whatever, condominiums, or, or whatever.
The answer is they go on Saturdays, every Saturday, they'll have the opportunity, and that's it, there's, there's no other, there's no other option.
That's the simple, yeah, I understand it's five families that we contract for, but where can they drop off their recyclables, besides those bins that we've put around town, potentially?
No, they can go up to the landfill on Saturdays.
Okay, so, 'cause this was asked of me, people are being mindful, and I applaud that, their efforts. A lot of things happened, uh, let's see, in regards to keeping our property values up, one of the things that has been done in the past at Subcommittee was enforcing the statutes of keeping an orderly house, and that's something that the police has, have helped us do, that there is, there are statutes on the books about keeping an orderly house, and that just means when a property becomes quite disorderly, you have the ability to tell them to, so we can do our job by, and we encourage our, our police to enforce some of those policies, to keep our property values up. That's way back in our conversation, hours ago. And I did wanna point out that while we did vote on that audit, and it went the way it did, as far as the vote went, I, one of the things I'd written down before it was said was the vote for appropriating the funds, and personally, I will not support appropriating the funds, because I just will not appropriate that. The other thing I wanna point out, tonight, you know, I was very discouraged, we are sort of given, we are constantly, on this Council, told decorum, and people point out when we're not doing things correctly, and I remember when I ran, and I was told, oh, are you gonna follow Robert's Rules? That's the short version, I've got the big one, too, and I was very disappointed this evening, when Robert's Rules with a point of order was not followed, and when there were constant bickering between Council members. Chair has the right to stop discussion, people have the, I believe it's our duty to be respectful, when there's a point of order called, all discussion is stopped, and, and the question is, is, the comment is made. And I would think that, since we are constantly told how we're supposed to be appropriate, and when we're not appropriate, that I'm pointing out the fact that it was very, I'm very disappointed, and it was very inappropriate this evening, at the way some Councils reacted, and I would hope that in the future, we can maintain some civility, and act accordingly to the rules, and perhaps everybody who has a copy should reread some of the decorum in terms of, of moving forward. So, thank you on that, and I guess that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
She didn't recognize you, that's part of the rule.
I'm just asking, did it recognize right now?
Could you, I'm not.
You have brothers of the past.
You've spoken quite a bit this evening, Counselor, and I'm really tired, I want, I'd like to get the next meeting date. Everybody's had their opportunity to speak in Counselors' Forum. When is the next meeting date?
Monday, December 17th, here at 7:00 PM, in Council Chambers, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Seconds? Wanna sit here all night? No? Okay. All in favor? Meeting's adjourned.